Council, we are ready to start today's meeting of June ninth officially at nine ten in the morning. City Clerk, will you take roll call?
Councilmember Greta Fel. Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Asparza.
Present.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Here.
Councilmember Soria.
Here.
Council Vice President Capriolio.
Here.
President Arias.
Here. All right, Gavin, do we have the budget of allegiance ready? All right, it looks like we don't, so let's move on to the next item. Mayor, are you ready to address the council? On your next item?
For the public, to the public, this is to notify the citizens that there is a dedicated Zoom line or link for Spanish speakers and the.
City Attorney, what are the, what is the, our legal sort of ability to reset a different Zoom link here? One with more appropriate controls?
So Council, you didn't hear the city attorney, but we don't have time to notice the meeting and we did require deadlines. We'll continue to remove people as they interrupt the meeting. So just be patient with us today.
So I'm going to repeat the website, excuse me, the web link for Spanish speakers for this meeting. It's HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash US zero two WEB dot ZOOM, Z O O M dot US forward slash J forward slash eight eight five six six three nine six three seven. So that's how you can get to that website. If you didn't catch it, please call the clerk's office and they can help you with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can someone put the link on the chat?
That would be a good idea.
So, City Clerk, do we need a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, we do.
All right, Council, I'll consider a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
All right, motion made by Councilwoman Soria, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition to the agenda being approved today? Actually, we need a roll call. My apologies.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Asparza.
Aye.
Councilmember Karbasi.
Yes.
Councilmember Soria.
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio. Council Vice President Capriolio. President Arias.
Yes. All right. With that, Mayor, you have the floor. And just a reminder to the members of public, if you label yourself and identify yourself as a council member on this Zoom meeting, you will also be removed. Let's make sure we keep things courteous and we continue this meeting as necessary. With that, Mayor, you have the floor with the first item, the mayor's fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget presentation.
Good morning, and these are indeed extraordinary times. I've, twelve years is the first time I've done a budget presentation or been involved in a Zoom virtual reality type of setup. But the COVID-19 pandemic has had a dramatic impact on our economy and our budget, an almost unprecedented impact. It'll take time to evaluate how long the economy will recover. But right now, and Jane will go over this later, we have a projected shortfall of $7 million for the FY20 budget and $32 million shortfall for FY21 totaling roughly $39 million. And for the first time that I can ever recall, the city is proposing a continuing resolution that will roll over the current approved FY20 budget, I believe as of May fifteenth, Jane, correct me, and amendments into the FY21, and it will be balanced, be a balanced budget. And the question is, why do we need a continuing resolution? One, we can't probably forecast our sales tax revenues because, one, delays in budget data, we don't have our third and fourth, we wouldn't have fourth by now. But those budget people who have been doing this for years and are typically within one or two or three percent accuracy are totally in the blind trying to make forecasts under such unpredictable circumstances. And the continuing resolution basically adds up to ninety days to evaluate revenue growth and a better measure of the full impact of this pandemic. And we're not certain whether we're going to receive funding from the federal government or not, but we should know with the next thirty to probably ninety days, there could be help from the federal government that could make a big difference in the $40 million shortfall. And we have CARES funds too, and we're, that we have to stand right now by the end of the year. You're going to get a spending plan, a detailed plan by Thursday on that one. So the council and the public have an opportunity to review the budget. We've set up budget hearings for all departments for the next two weeks. And there'll be a second shot because we anticipate in September to have the data that we're looking for in the third and fourth quarters, having some idea by then how the economy is recovering, where we'll come back to council in the fall, probably in September, and we have a much better look at what the revenue numbers are, the expense numbers are. More important, we'll probably have definitively know whether or not the federal government is going to come in and provide relief for cities and counties. My gut level feeling and based on talking to our lobbyists, talking to other mayors, that I think we're going to get it, it's just a question of when and how much. So Assistant City Manager James Sumper is going to present a PowerPoint presentation to go over the FY21 proposed budget, and she's going to offer, also show you options to close that gap. And I'm going to let Jane take it from here. Thank you, Council.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I'm just trying to get the right buttons pushed. Good morning, Council. As the mayor has pointed out, there are several extraordinary circumstances with regards to this particular budget. And I'm going to walk you through the presentation that hopefully will outline some of these issues and with the potential steps that we have taken and steps that we have under review to potentially take. So, as the mayor pointed out, the current status shows a significant shortfall by the end of 2021. The total of approximately forty million between the end of twenty and the end of twenty one. And that we are still on trajectory to find actual sales tax data, which is the most significant revenue that is unknown until the end of July, beginning of August. The other revenues, such as sales tax, room tax, business license, will not be known until the end of July or August. As the mayor also pointed out, we are still working with our federal and state representatives to secure additional funding from the federal and the state governments. I might also point out that this is also true of some other funds like gas tax and Measure C. So, to address this, the administration has decided to propose a continuing resolution. And what this in effect does is roll over the current FY2020 amended appropriations into twenty one until these actual revenues are coming. This is for all departments and all funds, and this is a temporary measure. When better numbers are known, the administration will return to council the budget revision sometime in the fall, which will address the current status and any steps that will be taken to handle this situation.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I'm sorry, Jane, the mayor is in the closed session room?
Uh, yes, he is.
Oh, that where he wants to be? Oh, no, I'm sorry, never mind. I'm sorry, I thought I was kicked out of the meeting. I apologize. Sorry.
Okay, moving on. The continuing resolution, in essence, rolls over the amended appropriations and revenues as of May fifteenth, twenty twenty. The amended budget is in effect the FY2020 adopted budget, which is in essence the book that you received at the end of last year or at the very beginning of this year. It was the book that you received beginning of this year plus any changes that were made by council during the course of the fiscal year. It in effect extends the fiscal year until better information is known. This temporary budget is balanced, and the ten percent of all the appropriations from each operating fund will be placed into a contingency to ensure that it is balanced. Operating and capital budget will both be status quo. There are no new programs, positions, or projects contained within this continuing resolution. If there are any new capital projects that are time sensitive that must be brought in in this bridge period, they will be brought back to council for approval, but we do not anticipate too many of those happening. As far as which documents that you will be prepared or you will be shown to approve, they are the same ones that you have always shown, been shown, the annual appropriation resolution, position authorization resolution, which will reflect current positions, plus any that were approved by council during this fiscal year because they're now official position. The salary resolution, the property tax override resolution, which is necessary in order to receive property tax override revenues, and the counting has a due date of the end of August so that we have to pass this for that to happen. And the gamut limit resolution, which is a state requirement. Getting into the steps that have been taken. As an administrative matter, we have instructed certain projects to be deferred, starting with certain capital projects. We had over one point, well, one point four million this year and one point, almost eight, one point eight million next year that we have decided to defer in parking capital. Parking smart meters, we were scheduled to go to council and award the contract to in install parking meters, smart meters. We have delayed that because we do not believe that it is sensible for us to undertake another lease payment at this time, which will again save us about $626,000 in FY21. The decision was also made not to pursue a safer grant. And while this is a grant that would assist the fire department, it would also require a significant investment of general fund money. And again, given the circumstances, it did not seem to be prudent to pursue this and obligate the general fund for an additional million, fifteen thousand dollars. There are also numerous capital projects that were funded by the general fund that will now be moved over to SB one. That totals about $2 million. Now that has ramifications for SB one that we will have to examine. But the goal here was to relieve the burden on the general fund. There are also two other items in FY20, which was the deferral, not the defunding, but the deferral of the city hall fence and a media room remake, which is, which is another item that we felt could be delayed until such time as better numbers are known and we know whether we can actually afford it. Those were the, those were the items that were contained within the deferred capital. Personnel related, we have instituted hiring restrictions for general fund departments with some exceptions. These exceptions are primarily for emergency services dispatchers and for police cadets. Estimated savings through the end of the fiscal year is $600,000. We have also instituted no wage increases for unit two personnel, nonrepresented personnel as of six thirteen twenty. The estimated savings from that is at $50,000. There are other operational restrictions that we have, that we have put in place that estimated that has saved approximately $25,000. All told, between twenty and twenty one, we have proposed steps that we have already taken to save approximately $8 million in, in general fund expenditure. There are other steps, however, that we are under, that we are taking under review that should we need additional reductions, that these would also be put before the council to be debated and potentially to be implemented. The first is a cut to non-personnel appropriations, primarily what we know as operations and maintenance. That would be an across-the-board reduction to all general fund and internal service fund departments. The savings from this will vary depending on whether or not all departments participate. But the savings vary from one point five million to one point seven million, and this is a full year. We also have personnel actions that we are contemplating, although please note that some of these would involve notice to and consultation with bargaining units. Reductions in non-MOU-related accounts where necessary or possible, example would be overtime. Although note that any reductions in staffing could cause an increase to overtime if we wish to maintain those programs. We are also examining defunding or eliminating positions. These vary, these savings vary depending on the exclusions. Again, if we don't delete or, or defund emergency services dispatchers or police officers or bus dr, well, not bus drivers, but firefighters, et cetera, all of those have, have an impact. But if all the positions are defunded or eliminated, the savings are estimated at approximately $2 million. Now that is over the budgeted attrition that we have already worked into the FY21 budget. A reduction in citywide temporary staffing, whom we have estimated that a ten percent reduction would save approximately $426,000. Furloughs, if we include sworn staff and all city staff, one week equals approximately $3.1 million. Salary givebacks, a one percent from all permanent staff would be approximately $1.6 million. And then finally, reductions in filled positions. And again, the savings really depends on which positions are cut and at what time. So no real estimate could be given for that one. The other item that is under review is the use of the emergency reserve and to what extent we need to dip into that. And then finally, a delay or cancellation of general fund capital projects. We have put one, one sample there. There could possibly be others. So all told, between the steps that we have already taken and the ones that we have under review, the total reductions that we see on these two total up to a little more than $18 million. At least the ones that we have estimates for. A brief mention of the CARES money. And this is for primarily the general fund, the general fund only. The total allocation was 92.8 million. We have already committed 10 million for testing and tracing, two million for small business grants, a million and a half for rental assistance, half a million for farm-to-table, 110,000 for EDC business education programs. I believe the strategic plan for the remainder of the CARES money will be presented to council on June the eleventh. I might also note, the transportation and airports also received CARES funding, but these funds can only be used within those departments to support their operations and, and, and there, and the impacts that those departments are showing from the COVID-19 pandemic. Finally, we have an analysis of overtime, and we do have a more detailed printout if you would care to see this. This is simply an overview. This analysis, please note, is as of the end of May, May twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty. The majority of the overtime in the general fund is in the police and the fire departments. As shown, the general fund estimate is to exceed budgeted overtime by 1.3 million. That is primarily in the fire department, and that is primarily for shift replacement. A transportation department, which is in the enterprise category, as you see there, the fourth, fourth line down, also has significant overtime usage. In a number of cases, overtime is used to backfill for vacancies. And of course, as noted, the summary is shown, we do have the detailed by fund. If council wishes to see that, we can have that, we can have that distributed today. So with that, that concludes my presentation as far as an overview of the budget. Again, for the general fund and for all these funds, I would refer you to the FY2020 adopted book as a detail for the programs and the positions that are contained within this continuing resolution. There have been a couple of changes, if you will, to the general fund budget. In fact, as of yesterday, there were a total of, I believe, at least the number of changes that would have been shown in the continuing resolution. There were three changes to the general fund that happened during the fiscal year. So between the time that the budget was built and the time the budget was approved by council, there have been three changes that are contained within, within the continuing resolution. And those details can be given to the council at any time. There were other items that impacted the general fund, but these came after the continuing resolution was prepared and so are not reflected within the continuing resolution. That concludes my presentation.
Will you talk about them, Jane?
The, the, the changes? Of course, I can.
Yeah.
Allow me first to go to our Council Vice President.
Oh, of course.
He's on the phone. Is that the conclusion of your presentation?
It is. I can, I can address Councilmember Soria's question later.
Thank you. With that, Council Vice President Capriola, do you have any questions for staff? All right, let's go to Councilwoman Soria. You're next. I'll wait for Councilmember Capriola.
Okay.
So Jane, I just wanted to ask you if you could, you kind of said a couple of things. So one, there's three major changes. I think it's, I'd obviously love to receive a hard copy of that. But I think that it's important for the public to know what those are, and so if you can discuss those now. And then, so I can start off with that question.
Okay. Okay, the first one was, was the Fourteenth Amendment. It was the Resolution 2020 dash zero two nine. It was adopted on February the thirteenth, twenty twenty. It was, in, in essence, the carryover resolution that you passed. It was six million, six oh three, four hundred for operating programs and capital improvements and citywide. And it was the largest single change, but that was the carryover reso. And we, we will get you details of all those. I mean, you have them already. It's, it, you already have the, the carryover reso, but we can get you fresh copies so that you know. The second change was the Twenty-third Amendment, which was passed on the twelfth of December. It was for $25,000, and it was to support funding towards the Mong cultural New Year celebration. The, the last one that would have appeared in the continuing resolution was the forty-first. It was passed in April twenty-third of twenty twenty. It was for $750,000. It was for the Save Our Small Business program. And so that would be the other one. And those were the changes that were from the adopted budget to the continuing resolution you have before you. Those are the, so the three resos that changed that, that book, and that's it.
Great, thank you. So on the last change that you mentioned, I know that previously we had discussed. And when we first created that program, we didn't know that we were going to receive federal relief dollars, the CARES dollars. And so I know that we've had conversations, and one of the things that I'd like our administration to look is whether we can go back because it is COVID-related. I know that we initially established a program to be, we said, from loan to grant, to become a grant. But I know that the, the qualifications of, of being reimbursable requires us to just give the money as grant. So has the administration looked at whether we could save those dollars so that we don't have to use our general fund as we did, like replace them, and use the Federal CARES Act money? Because it hasn't been reflected in those expenses that you outlined clearly. At least for my desire, it would be a desire for us to figure out if it's reimbursable.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm being told that it is reimbursable and that it is possible to, to convert that, that program into a CARES program as opposed to a general fund program.
Okay, do we have to take council action on that? I know that there was some discussion. Okay, so maybe putting it on whatever council meeting so that it does reflect and therefore it's saving us and making that gap smaller.
Yeah, we can actually put that as a, as a motion to, to change the, the CR. And it'll be, it'll be, it'll be done as, as the same as all the other motions, and then you'll vote on them. And then we can go back and change that and change the funding. So we'll put that down there. Do you, does it need a second? It probably needs a second, just like all the other motions.
I'll make the motion. I don't know if any of my colleagues want to second that.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Can you restate the motion, please?
The motion is to convert the small business loan grant program to a small business grant program from the general funds that can be applied towards COVID-19. Councilwoman Soria, do you have any additional questions?
Yes, I have a couple other questions. So I know today we're not going to be looking at FACS or airports, but you did mention that we did get federal CARES Act dollars. And I know we haven't really been focused on that. The focus has been on the kind of general fund, federal CARE Act relief. I'd like to get a detailed, I don't know, memo on what expenses airports and FACS are using that. And one of the questions that I have for, for, for those dollars, like I know that at the airports, we have a couple small businesses. Are, are those businesses eligible for those federal CARE Act dollars that those departments receive, or that that department received? Just to put out there.
Okay.
You know, I'd like to interject that Mike Lima wrote a train memo, I believe it was distributed at the end of April, beginning of that included all of the CARES dollars that we've received to date, including those for airports and Department of Transportation, that outlined everything they could use those dollars for. We can resend that, but I believe Councilmember Soria, that, that would have, have all of the information that you're seeking for those two departments.
Well, I tell you what, what?
I have it in front of me, and there's like three sentences in front of the airport's allocation, so I don't feel like it provides enough detail. I have it here, so I've been reading that. That's why I'm asking the question.
Okay, we'll have both departments prepare a, a detailed memo to, to outline what, what the funding is and, and what it can be used for.
And, yeah, what the, what the expenses have been. So I think I have a better picture now on the, on what we've spent with the federal CARES, kind of the general fund one as you outlined in your presentation, and I appreciate that. But I think for the other departments, I think it'd be great to also see, see that.
Yeah, okay.
Then I think those are, for now, those are all the questions. Well, I guess I'm going to be asking, I know that you touched upon like vacancies and some, some of the options to, to reduce like travel expenses. As part of your guys' analysis to reduce or to close the gap, are you guys also, have you guys looked at consultants? Like consultants that may, we, I know that we hire a variety and enter into contracts with a variety of consultants, but have we taken a, a look, and it would be probably a great opportunity to look at deeply what, which ones are necessary and which ones are not? There are some that will be absolutely necessary. There may be others that we can do without. I'd like to do that before I, we consider like the furloughs or, you know, reducing people's, our salaries or what, whatnot. So before impacting our employees, I'd like to really make sure that we are looking deep into those consulting agreements that may at the moment not be as necessary.
Do you want to focus strictly on the consultants for the general fund, or would they be citywide?
Well, it, I'm open to, to figuring out, you know, how to best approach this. In some instances, some enterprise departments may not, we may not need to look at it as deep. But if you guys are going to be proposing a reduction across the board or a furlough across the city, then yeah, we need to, because not every department is the same. Not every department is funded the same way. So I think that we need to be creative, and I get that we want to treat everyone the same, but everyone isn't the same. And at a ten percent across the board may not be the wisest thing to do. That's my perspective. You know, I've gone through, this is going to be my sixth budget. So I know right So I know right now that the plan is to cut ten percent, but how does that really reflect when the biggest shortfall is within our general fund department? And I think that that's where obviously the biggest focus must be. The other thing that I did just want to mention, just, you know, and I repeated this, I think, to the administration and, and I want the public to know, just as an overall with, with the budget, I'm a little concerned. I get that we have to do that. You guys are proposing a continuing, a continuing resolution just because the uncertainty that exists. But my, my hope and desire is that we take this moment and opportunity to figure out if we can do something different in our budget when it comes to what, what we're, what we're spending. You know, some things that we, where we can really save that are unnecessary. And I don't want to just support status quo. And that's been my feeling from, from the beginning. I get the continuing resolution, but I'm looking for, you know, as you guys move forward into the fall and want to come back to this council with, you know, some, not just, you know, modifications to fill in the gap. How are we servicing our community different? How are we, you know, we've learned, I think, quite a bit over the last three months with COVID-nineteen and the impacts and the need. How poverty has significantly impacted communities of color. How COVID-nineteen continues to demonstrate the racial inequities that exist and health disparities that exist among our brown and black communities. And this is our opportunity to do something different and not continue to do the same. That's what I'm interested in, in looking at. So at this moment, you know, I'm going to go through the motions of asking those questions in every department and so forth. But I do want to make sure that people are being thoughtful as we move forward and we're thinking differently, given the COVID night, what COVID-nineteen has taught us. Thank you.
Thank you, council. With that, I'm going to make sure we go back to council vice president Caprillo before we go to the members. Council vice president Caprillo, do you have any questions of Jane and staff? All right, seeing that, I'm going to go back to the next person's question. It's council.
Thank you.
Council vice president Caprillo, can you hear us?
Yes, I just, my phone is acting very strange. Anyway, you know, the devil lies in the details. You hear that so often, at least I do in my business, et cetera. So if we could get some real details on some of these issues by way of memorandum and not three or four lines, it's something that really has substance. That would sure make our job a lot easier as well as the administration. So we have a clearer picture of what on the table from the administration's perspective. So we can properly evaluate it, prioritize it and come up with the best decision for the entire city of Fresno. So that would be my request. Other than that, I'll reserve my time for later this budget discussion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, council vice president Caprillo. Councilmember Butterfield, you now have the floor.
Thank you. Want to agree wholeheartedly with what council member Soria said about the consultants. I think that's something that she and I talked about several years ago as we defunded one of the consultant contracts that had been approved when I came on the council. And then we defunded it, which was the appropriate thing to do. There are many consultants, millions of dollars of consultants. Some clearly that we can use and need and some that I think we don't need. So I think that's an area that we definitely need to look at. Want to ask you, Jane, on the steps already taken on the discounter capital, you said there's about eight million dollars that, that you're looking at, correct?
That is for, yes, between, between this year and next year.
Correct. And then on, on the additional steps under review, were all those that you listed, the personnel actions, that was ten million dollars you were referring to?
Roughly, yes.
Okay, and then the two combined were eighteen? Okay, and then on the CARES funding, the question I have for you, are salaries for police and fire, are they able to be paid for under CARES because some of this is related to COVID-nineteen, particularly with fire? Are you looking at that?
Yes, we are. That is information that came to us relatively recently. And we, Mike Lima has been consulting with the, with the state and federal lobbyists and with the Department of the Treasury to make sure that that is in fact a valid use and what type of, of formula we would need to use, what type of restrictions that there might be with that as far as what can and cannot be claimed. And so we're trying to, to come up with a number that we might be able to put for the council as far as an expenditure reimbursement, if you will, for those salaries for a given time period.
Okay, so what, what is, what, I mean, if you could drill down a little bit into that, what, what are the things you're looking at in relation to that? Because I think we, we've gotten information as you've gotten information that their salaries can be used for COVID-nineteen. Do you have a number that has been thrown out there in terms of what can potentially be covered at this point?
Well, again, going back and making sure that we're not claiming any like salaries when they were on vacation or, or when they were off for some other reason. We, we're not really sure whether or not we should be claiming those. And then whether or not we should be claiming the, the salaries of the two chiefs. Because, you know, obviously they're in a, kind of in a separate category. We are looking at somewhere in, in the neighborhood of, of thirty million.
But we, but, yeah, but I was just going to also say that we want to be very cautious to make sure that what we do think is eligible is actually eligible, because anything that we claim that's not, we will have to pay back.
Yeah, I understand that. What, what is the number though, Jane, for a couple?
Oh, you know, it was, it's, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about thirty million. We're continuing to look at that and make sure that we are complying with, with whatever, you know, guidance we're getting out of the treasury and we will continue to refine that number as we get more guidance.
Okay, so you're looking at the possibility.
You froze.
Yep.
If this goes salaries between.
Pardon, I'm, you, you froze there for just a little while.
Yeah, yeah. What I, what I'm saying is, are you, are you looking at the possibility of thirty million dollars of salary being reimbursed by the CARES Act?
Percentage of that.
Or, or percentage.
Okay, percentage, but that, I mean, that's the number you're looking at. We don't know what it's actually going to be, but it, it could be as much as that. It could be less than that.
Correct.
If I could add, other cities I'm talking to are ranging around ten, fifteen, maybe twenty percent. So that's, that's Los Angeles, some cities in California. So we'll get a clearer picture, I believe, in the next few weeks. That's why we wanted some time here. That is potentially, you know, a big number for the city. As Wilma said, that everything we do is subject to an audit. So if we make a mistake, and, and they don't give you like letters of assurance and guarantees, it's, it's all speculation. So we've got to, at the end, all of us have to make a decision that's safe and stretches it as far as we possibly can.
Now, when you say ten to fifteen percent, what, what, I don't understand. Where, where are you getting that percentage? What is that a percentage of?
Of the total salary spent, minus some of the exclusives we talked about. Some cities are taking, for example, ten percent of the entire police force, fifteen percent of the entire, entire department. Those are the types of things we're looking at.
Okay, and you don't know why they're picking ten percent or fifteen. It's just the number they're picking.
Mike, Mike will be talking with people around the state. I've been talking to people. So we're going to try to come to some consensus. We believe in the end, there's safety in numbers. So if, you know, several, and these are the cities you got direct allocations. So you talk about six cities in California, you know, from Sacramento all the way up to Los Angeles that had these, these direct funding. So if we all agree together, there may be, again, safety in numbers. So that'll be a discussion that we're going to continue on the next couple of weeks and hope to get a, a much more clarity. But it has potential, has potential to really draw into this deficit we were showing right now.
Well, yes, I mean, if you can reimburse thirty million dollars and we have a shortfall estimated at thirty-nine or forty million dollars, you've just whittled away three quarters of the shortfall. So it is a big number. I'm wondering why it's not in your report here to the council that you're looking at that number, that that's part of the issue. I mean, you have all these.
You're going to get a second, a separate report on Thursday.
Right, we actually have it outlined in the, the spending plan for the CARES dollars that will be presented to council on Thursday.
Okay, well, I, I think it's a big number. I think council needs to be aware of it. I mean, if it is thirty million dollars, if it is actually reimbursable through the CARES Act, that solves a lot of the problem, doesn't solve all of the problem, of course. But it helps us in terms of dealing with furloughs, cuts and things of that sort, which is a, it's a big deal. I mean, it's a big deal. And so hopefully the CARES Act can use that, we can use those dollars. What the information that I've gotten and that I've read seems to indicate that we can, in fact, use that to reimburse as long as you can make the nexus. And certainly I think there's a lot of money that's been spent from the fire department on salaries related to COVID, certainly, I think with police as well. So something the council needs to be aware of and as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Let me add one caveat, too, if I can, is that we, on our, on our, our next year's second, we do five-year budgets. So at, at this point in time, based on all the data, the, the second year is thirty million dollars short too. So keep that in mind as we go forward.
Well, and, and, and I think we just want to make sure that whatever nexus we create is, is audit-proof. Because unfortunately, the, the Treasury Department has not been overly forthcoming with guidance and with specific things and specific instructions. And so as you say, council member, to build the nexus between that, that CARES money and the money that's been spent on salaries, we just want to make sure that whatever nexus we create is, is audit-proof.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chavis, you have the floor next, followed by councilmember Gisparza.
Thank you. Appreciate the work that staff has done here. And, you know, I've had numerous conversations with the mayor, with our city manager. And part of my concerns that I had with just approving a continuing resolution is, is the message that it sends, that it's status quo. And we know that that's not the case. We've had over thirteen hundred businesses, i.e. restaurants, that have either been shut down or operating at twenty-five to thirty percent. A number of barber shops, hair nail, hair nail salons. And so we know that that's not going to be status quo. We know that we're going to see those results come in here in a couple of, couple of weeks, actually. And so what I want to get out of this conversation are two things. One is I want to make sure that we have a full, transparent and more importantly sobering understanding of what the deficit is. More importantly, the options that the council will consider, given the resources that we'll have at our, at our disposal. That includes general fund, COVID CARES, FEMA reimbursement, everything. I think that's very important to paint that picture for the public. Because right now there are certain expectations that our constituents have of what the levels of service are. Because, you know, we understand that this happened very quickly. The last eight, ten weeks have been very painful for a lot of people. And we know that there have been a lot of people that have been out of work and some of them are still not back at work. So they're feeling a lot of the pressures that we're feeling as well. And so I want to make sure that we set realistic expectations about what the levels of service will be for public safety, for parks, for public works, for paving projects, for everything that relates to their daily lives. I don't think that doing a continuing resolution without explaining to the public what the options are and more importantly, what scenario one or scenario two could look like, is something that's too, too far-fetched. And I understand the fact that staff doesn't have a crystal ball. You can't see what the numbers look like now. But I think we've got a pretty good idea as to where we're going to land with regards to the, to the hole in the budget that we have. And then the other piece that I want to make sure that we hone in on is the COVID-nineteen spending plan. I'm sure like, you know, a lot of my colleagues, I've received a lot of calls from constituents that are very well aware that we received over ninety million dollars for COVID-related expenses to mitigate this pandemic. And, and I want to make sure that the administration understands that, you know, yes, you're submitting the spending plan on Thursday, but that's your proposal. I hope that, you know, within the next couple of weeks, we're going to have a chance for the council to weigh in because ultimately we're going to have to appropriate and vote and approve this, this spending plan. And understanding and I hope a realization of, of what's happened the last eight weeks where we track those numbers on a daily basis, we see how hard this has hit our community. Now we're actually on the state's watch list because our infection rate has increased significantly. So we know that that's going to require a lot of mitigating measures, particularly in areas that have a lot of the essential workers that work in food processing plants, packing houses, folks, folks that work in those industries that didn't have the option of not going to work. And so what I think you're going to see from the council is come up with several buckets of expenditures revolving around assistance for small businesses, rental assistance for, for our folks that are struggling. And then also equally important will be health initiatives. We know that there have been communities that have been hit hard and they have a lot of the pre-existing conditions that make COVID-nineteen much more challenging when they, when they are infected. And so that, I want to flag that for the administration because the council right now is having conversations as to what that spending plan looks like. And I think what you'll see in the next week or so is coming up with a rough draft, a framework of what that'll look like, especially for, like I said, those essential workers and people that don't have the option of not going to work. And as many of you know, I have a district that has over forty food processing and packing houses plants. I hear it every day from them. People are very well aware that we have these ninety-plus million dollars that we receive. And I want to make sure that we, we have a very transparent and open conversation with our folks as to how we're going to spend that money. So I'm, I'm willing to hear the, the, the rest of the presentations. And like I said, I don't expect staff to have a crystal ball and, and know what this will look like, you know, in a year or two years. But I think we've got some pretty good, strong guidelines as to what that will look like for the city of Fresno. And I'm hoping that we appropriate resources where we know we need them the most and where we know that people have been feeling the pinch and we're still not back to normal. Even though the state allowed us that variance, I can tell you that the restaurants that are open are operating at thirty-five, forty percent. People are still not comfortable going back to a lot of those locations and patronizing our businesses. So I think the mayor's right. When we look at the five-year budget projection, we got to keep in mind that this hole that we're trying to fill is going to require a lot of work, a lot of difficult decisions on priorities. And, and what I'll do in, in closing is look at what the state is doing. They just flagged for the public at large a budget that contemplates very difficult decisions, but that also understands that we have to make investments. And they project scenario one, whether that is that the federal government comes in and helps or scenario two where that doesn't happen and then the cuts are have, are have to be made, a difficult decision. So I, I like to mirror that process and, and, and going forward, make sure that we have, one, a very clear picture of what our revenue is and, and as best as we can guesstimate that. But two, that we really hone in and sharpen our pencils because I was here when the last recession happened. And I was actually one of the employees that got furloughed, I think, twice. And so I know that's not an easy decision for anybody to make, but I want to make sure that we have all the information and all the data on the table and that the public, more than anything, clearly understands that this is not status quo and that there are going to be some decisions that have to be made. Thank you.
Councilman, can I make one point of clarification? Just because this is presented in the form of a continuing resolution, it doesn't mean there's not sufficient debate, amendments and everybody in the end collaborating together to come up with this final budget and trying to identify as best we can a revenue. So again, this will be an ongoing process subject to, I guess, a final vote, I believe, on June twenty-fifth.
No, I appreciate that, Mayor. And you and I have had a number of conversations with regards to that. And I think out of that conversation, I think we're both saying similar things. But I want to make sure that we're on the same page with regards to painting the picture for, for the community. Because if we expect the federal government to come in, there has to be some kind of pressure point that comes from their constituents too because we represent those same residents and they have to let their congress members know and their state and their senators know that it's important for them to come in and help our communities. And, and that's what I want to get more than anything, a conversation about the need for all of us to be rowing in the same direction.
Absolutely.
Thank you, councilmember. As far as you have the floor. Thank you, councilmember. As far as you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. So, you know, this has really been the, the year from the Twilight Zone, and now here we are in the, the June budget month of the Twilight Zone with this CR proposal. You know, looking forward to, you know, if, if we were to actually follow through and pass the, the continuing resolution, a couple of questions with respects to our projected deficits right now. So I know we had seven million projected in this current fiscal year. Is it safe to assume that we are rolling over all seven million of that into the following fiscal year's deficit? Roughly, what, what proportion of that is being rolled over?
Well, when I first presented it a month ago, the idea was yes. But again, until we know the definitive numbers for the end of this fiscal year, I don't know that it's seven million. It could be five, it could be eight.
Obviously, we're in the dark on, on that. But based on what we know, is that, that full thing, the full seventy?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so essentially, we're looking at, at forty, roughly thirty-nine, forty, predicted what we know right now. And we're in the dark, both on, on spending right now, kind of continuing to go as, as we have been with notwithstanding the changes you have made. And then we're also in the dark on whether or not the CARES Act dollars will be there to support us. So, you know, as I mentioned to you kind of privately, this is almost, almost a gamble of sorts, right? We're counting on some sort of help. Whereas just a few weeks ago, we were actually counting on the deficit getting worse than what it is projected to, to be now. And so if we were to conduct a budget, do a CR now, conduct a, a budget, in the worst-case scenario, making cuts in September, that's two, three months out from now. That's, you know, seventeen percent, twenty-five, almost twenty-five percent of the whole fiscal year. So looking at the current projected deficit of forty million, if we were to continue spending at our current level, I mean, for three months into the next fiscal year, how much would that forty million deficit increase? It, it, you know, if we're, if we're taking twenty-five percent of the year and continuing to spend, I mean, are we, are we digging ourselves into a deeper hole, or is that hole stay as projected?
Well, I, I think that a lot of it depends on the revenues that start coming in, in the next fiscal year, and the impact that that has. And, and again, that gets back to whether or not we're, we're starting to see a V-shaped recovery, a W-shaped recovery, an L-shaped recovery, or whether we're, we go into a, a, a recession. As some people say, we are already in one. And so as, as, as far as, as whether or not that, that deficit would get any bigger, you'd also have to judge as, as we have outlined in our presentation, the other reduction measures that we've already taken that will impact twenty-twenty-one. The deferral of capital and the deferral of, of some, some operating expenses, the deferral of hiring of and filling certain, certain positions in the general fund, all of which will not only save money in, in fiscal year that we are in now, but will also save money in the fiscal year that we are going into beginning in July. And so as far as a definitive number, is that deficit going to go up or down? I can't tell you. There's simply too much uncertainty to be able to tell you with any level of certainty and any level of honesty that, yes, that deficit's gonna go up by fifteen percent, because there are simply too many variables that could impact that number. And, and that's why, that's, that's why the administration's position is to wait until those numbers are more known. And then we will be able to tell you with more certainty, okay, this is the difficulty, this is the hole that we are in. And of those measures that were under the, under review, in addition to any other things that might come along, like, like being able to use CARES funding for some expenditure replacement, or if they change the law and, and allow it to be used for revenue replacement, a whole host of factors could, could come in and, and basically, I mean, I hate to say this, but basically solve the problem. And, and not necessitate having to furlough our employees or cut our employees or cut programs, which I don't think any of us really want to do.
Sure. Well, so I mean, I, I understand there are a number of variables that will, will impact the number inevitably.
I can't give you a more definitive number. I wish I could.
I mean, my, the, the variable I want to hone in on i- is just, just the CR, right? So everything else held constant. And again, what I'm trying to do is sort of, you know, ascertain what might be the worst-case situation. I, I understand things could get better for us in terms of how we're allowed to use CARES Act money and such. But honing in on the one variable that is the CR, if we continue to spend at the same rate for, for a quarter of the fiscal year, is that, is that in itself going to dig, whatever the deficit is, is it gonna dig it deeper, or, or will it hold constant?
Without any additional, if, 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 if all we do is what we're already doing, which is, which is restricting hiring and restricting some operational and, and maintenance expenses and, and deferring them, if we, if we still do that, then I, I suppose the odds are that the deficit could grow. I don't know to what extent it, it would. And, and I think that if, if the administration were to get information coming in July, that somehow this is getting worse, that the sales tax numbers are not showing up the way they should, they would, number one, institute more stringent cuts and more stringent restrictions on spending before we could come back to the council and say, okay, well, the numbers that we're seeing do look worse, and so these are the steps that we advocate taking.
Sure. Well, yeah, I mean, from the council perspective of, of approving the CR, again, we're in the dark. And so, you know, we're sort of, from our perspective, we got away with the cost benefit of, of, of approving a CR. And, you know, we're talking about, you know, continuing our, our current level of spending for a quarter of the next fiscal year. I mathematically, it probably doesn't work in this way.
Let me clarify that. You're, you're continuing the level of appropriation, but the level of spending is dependent upon the departments. And the, the departments can be told and have been told that, that all but essential expenditures should be reviewed and, and deferred if, if at all possible. And so it isn't as though they're going to go and simply spend as they have spent for the first eleven months out of the year. They're, they're, they're going to be spending as little as they possibly can in order to minimize this, this deficit. So it isn't exactly going to be business as usual, if you would.
Okay. There's one other factor, too, Councilman, that most bargaining units have noticing requirements. They vary from one to the other. So it may be a thirty-day, it may be sixty, I'm not sure. That could actually be done with, with an intent that if the money came through, it would be, I could have to talk to Jeff on that, but the money would, that could be canceled at a later date, so that way you would not lose any time on the, the noticing. We'll look into that.
Okay. And then that, that's actually a good segue, Mayor, to my, my next question. With respect, if you could clarify to, in your PowerPoint, just about sort of the ten percent cut. And I know Councilmember Soria had referenced this. I mean, when, when, in your PowerPoint, are you referencing cutting across the board ten percent? Sort of just equally, or was that more of a general reference? I mean, what, what exactly do you mean by that?
Yeah. Let me clarify that, that, that this would only be for the general funds and for the internal service funds. And we include the internal service funds, because they charge the general fund. And, and I know this is somewhat of a, of a complex concept, but but when you cut something in, in a internal service fund, not all of the savings from that cut is accrued to the general fund, because they serve all the other departments in the city. But, but as a, as a traditional measure during the last, I don't know, four recessions that I've lived through, we have gone through and done and across the board, O and M, go in, cut your operations and maintenance, and then tell us the effects of that cut. And then, you know, those are reviewed. And if the cut is too egregious or and, and, and again, there's also some consideration given to the size of the budget. Those with a smaller budget, obviously, they have a greater amount of trouble making that ten percent cut. So it may be that in some cases, for a small department, you don't take all ten percent, because that would simply cripple their operation. And so there has to be some level of review after those, after those cuts are submitted for review to, to determine whether or not they're going to actually be, be accepted and, and be implemented.
Yes, yeah, perfect. That, that was my, my primary concern. You know, love all our departments, and obviously, we all serve the public, we all serve the residents of Fresno. But not all departments are, are made equal, especially in the eyes of, of our, of the residents here in Fresno. And I think, you know, the, the city is mature enough to have a conversation about, you know, what, what services they continue to value the most, and where, you know, where they're willing to take the trade-off in the impact of, of the current recession. So I appreciate that, that clarification. So obviously, you know, that, you know, that'll be a, a continuing conversation, I think, as things proceed, and if we end up facing that, that particular scenario. My last comment is just simply a comment and a suggestion. Based on my perspective of the CARES Act dollars, I think there's a lot of different useful ways the CARES Act dollars can be, can be utilized. We can continue to do some level of stimulus. You know, obviously, if we're allowed, we end up being allowed to, per the federal rules, we could plug some of the gap potentially. The revenue gaps that we do have. And then there's also a consideration of, you know, given, given history, given the trends we're seeing in COVID nineteen cases, maybe reserving some of, a, a, a good portion of that for a potential resurgence in the fall. But then having, again, contingency plans to spend it if that resurgence does not occur. So.
Just understand, the CARES dollars do have to be spent out, out the door by the end of December.
Before the end of the year, correct. Yeah. So, you know, I mean, I, 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 I think, you know, there's value in plugging our current revenue gaps. I also think there's value in, in finding an effective way to continue a, a local stimulus, right? And try to prevent, you know, get the economy going and prevent further gaps. And I know, I know that you do the, the budget five years at a time. And so, you know, I think an effective stimulus would certainly help us in, in the, the long run. So these are all different considerations. They all have trade-offs. It's all a limited amount of, of dollars. But just providing my perspective on, on, again, a different combination in which way it might be spent, and the timing of it. Maybe, you know, holding off a good portion of it, and then having a contingency plan to spend it before the thirty-first of December. If, if we're not impacted the way that history shows that we will be. So those are all my questions for now.
Okay, Councilmember Parbossi, do you have any questions to the administration? Okay, then let me ask my questions, Councilmember Soria, and then we'll go back to you on your items. So Jane, make sure that I am understanding this correctly. So based on your guys' continuing resolution memo, what you're asking for is a continuing resolution based on last year's expenditure plan. You're hoping for COVID to be used as revenue replacement? You have any counsel?
Yes.
You may use some reserve.
Yes.
That you may pursue furloughs and employee givebacks and layoffs to close a budget gap.
Yeah, among other items, yes.
Okay. So here are my budget questions for you and for every department that I would like answers to between now and before you ask us to vote on a continuing resolution. One is, what are the consultants, special service contracts, and outside vendor contracts that each department has? What are the vacancies for every department that have not been filled? What's the overtime budget for every department? What's the department reserve budget for every department? Because I know they have department reserves. Plus, what's our general reserve fund? What items from last year and last year's budget book that we have here are not going to be executed specifically? I know you outlined some that you, you have postponed, but I'd like to know exactly which items from last year's budget will not be implemented with the mayor's proposed continuing resolution. I'd like to know what groups and what employees will receive raises, salary raises this year and next year as reflective in their MOUs, how much those raises are, and what the cost is of those raises. You indicated that you're requesting that each department have pulled off on ten percent of their budget as a way to secure a balanced budget. I'd like to know exactly how they would reduce that ten percent of their budget if the council was to say, we're not just gonna hold it, but we're gonna cut your budget by ten percent. What exactly would be cut? What's their ten percent reduction plan, in essence, of each department? And with that, I'd like to make a motion to eliminate all consultant and service contracts.
Now, is that citywide or general fund?
As far as the continuing resolution. Citywide.
Citywide. So that would be also for the enterprise departments?
Correct. Because the enterprise departments are also gonna have to come up with a reduction plan, right?
To a much, much less extent.
Correct.
Much less extent.
Can you repeat that motion for us, please?
The motion is to eliminate all consulting contracts from the departments.
Even if it means an impact to service?
I'm sure we can discuss that when, when they're brought forward.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking of the consultants that were brought on for.
Well, I'm thinking of, you know, I, I just want, that's why I wanted to clarify the motion. There are consultants that provide expertise that we don't have in-house. So a lot of archaeological and paleontological work that's needed to be done.
Listening manager, as you know, you haven't provided us a list of consultants that you guys are utilizing, nor what their purpose is, nor whether they're essential and critical.
We actually do that as part of the Transparency Act reporting, and it was just loaded on the website.
Have you ever provided to the council? You expect us to go search on the website?
We will make sure that you have that as part of the budget discussion.
Keep in mind that my motion is to eliminate consulting contracts, because I'd like to see us take the low-hanging fruit before we get into employee givebacks, furloughs, and layoffs. So like anything else, this can be negotiated later. If we find that some of these consultants, like, you know, a federal lobbyist at this point, which I think is critical, if we're going, going to, you know, get some additional federal relief, might be appropriate. But for now, I think it's important for the council to see all the consultants and the service contracts that we're utilizing, and whether we can find any cost savings in those before we go into the layoff, reserve, and givebacks.
And, and I, to clarify, that includes all contracts that might be associated with your offices and, and, I mean, citywide, making sure. Okay.
A second?
Go ahead. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Soria. I think Councilmember Redefill thirded.
Are you a clean lobbyist, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and Mayor, I want to be clear. My, my intention is to get a clear understanding of all the outside contracts that we use. It's not just your consultants, but outside service providers, everything, to see what we, we can cut before we get to employee layoffs and other things. The other motion I'd like to make is that we don't allow, if we're gonna do a continuing resolution, that we don't allow any changes from budget lines within departments without council approval. I know currently, department heads and the city manager has the ability to move money around within the department budgets. But if we're gonna do a continuing resolution, I'd like to make sure that all those changes in the budget lines come back to the council, because we're gonna be tasked with coming up with some pretty big cuts. If, if option one or plan one from the mayor doesn't come to fulfillment, because COVID is ineligible for revenue replacement. So it's my second motion that during the continuing resolution time, that departments do not move money within their budgets without council approval.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then just from my perspective, Mayor and City Manager, as you know, we've had a lot of conversations on this, you know, condition of a budget. I, I like to just offer a few things from my perspective that I'd like to see us reevaluate before we get to the items app. You guys outlined in your continuing resolution memo. One, we've discussed consulting contracts. Two, I think there needs to be a hiring freeze versus a limit to hiring. If we're gonna go down the path of not having revenue replacement. Secondly, we have to really look at the overtime budgets. I know for every domino, there's a domino effect in the system. Four, I think we look, we must look at restructuring departments. In the last recession, City Manager Bruce Rutter was famously the director of three different departments. That's all in an attempt to reduce the service impact to our residents. I think there has to be a conversation about restructuring departments and what management is needed at this time before we get to the areas of furloughs. I also think we need to have some clarity on the County of Fresno tax sharing agreement that That um a, as you noted, the sales tax is a big portion of our general fund. Another big portion is a, is a property tax. That's all based on that county MOU. So um we need some resolution on what that county MOU is going to say in terms of how much money we get for any additional annexation before we simply just move on and, and, um, and get to the cuts and layoffs. I also think it's time for us to reevaluate the agreements with Amazon typically, Jane, what the estimated payments are for those three companies under the current agreements in, in this year. I know last year's.
You repeat that last part that we lost you.
Um I'd like to know what their estimated repayment um or refund to Amazon, Alta and Gap is under the current agreements and whether it's time for the um to assess whether it's time for the city to reevaluate, you know, these agreements. Um I, I know that as part of your budget, they're scheduled to receive a significant refund in the millions of dollars. I'd like to know what that is. Um and then lastly, we have to look at the pension system that we have. You know, if we're going to try and capture costs, um some people are already floating a tax measure to go back to local voters and capture some money to, you know, protect the service level that we have in the city. Before we go there, I think we have an obligation to look at every single dime that we spend. I, I'm fully um sure that our retirement system is fully funded and it's, it's worked that well for us. But I think we also have to look at whether there's some additional cost savings to the city by, you know, engaging in any new forms of the retirement system that the city operates. Those are all things in my view that we should evaluate before we go down the path of um reducing services in public safety or reducing services in the parks department or any other critical infrastructure. I know it's, the easiest thing for us is to delay fixing a road. Um if it is capital project, but that only gives us one-time savings. It doesn't give us ongoing savings. Um in my experience, when you're um officially in a recession, which the federal government declared, February, we entered the recession, which we are now. Um we need to make sure this, we take this opportunity to restructure and find permanent and ongoing cost savings, not just one time. So those are my questions and my comments for the budget. And um I'll take additional questions from the council at this time. Councilmember uh Soria and then Karbossi.
I'm council president. Before you move on, do you have, do you have that list that you could provide us to make sure we didn't miss anything?
Absolutely. I'll email it to you shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to um add and maybe ask also kind of a question. So I know that part of the presentation and part of the comments have been that we're relying on the federal CARES Act potentially, or we're hoping that they help us um fill in the shortfall. I know at the moment we have been able to look at some expenses um that will be reimbursable. I know that um we also talked early on and I know that the chief um for the police department, when we were engaging in COVID and enforcement, um didn't want our police department um to kind of get stuck in the middle. And so what we essentially did as a council, code enforcement has essentially been our enforcer when it became, when it came out to COVID. You guys remember, I think, majority of, of any of the, the calls, the violations of um price gouging and all of that was enforced by, by code. And so, you know, in, if we don't um have the opportunity, hopefully we will get, you know, some of those federal CARE Act to, to help our budget. We have to be very careful when it comes to um reimbursement, um especially when it comes to our police department. Because we need essentially access to the fact that we didn't want to have police out enforcing COVID stuff. So I just want people to be very mindful of that, hoping that obviously the federal government does allow us, does allow us to, to use those federal CARE Act dollars to close the gap. But if they don't, um I think that that was a missed opportunity. I just wanted to put it out there so the public knows because I do believe that um some of the work could have been reimbursed and some other hours, especially given the fact that our police department is general fund funded a hundred percent or predominantly um general fund. And so that was kind of one of, one of the things that I did um want to raise. I do still agree with um Councilmember Chavez um on kind of his comments. I've been in some of those meetings where we, we have talked to the administration about the various scenarios. I think by the end of this, the budget discussions over the next three weeks, I'm hoping that we can present something to the public where we say, hey, these, these, this is the option if the federal CARE Act money does come through. And this is not, this is the second option if those federal CARE Act money do, do not come through for us. Um I want to make sure that we're very realistic and very clear. I don't, don't want to send any false hope to anyone. And I want to be able to be prepared and make those um, those adjustments and tying up our belts today rather than waiting months from now and then having to make um additional difficult uh decisions at that point. Um so I'm in agreement. I'm hoping that we do get that information um fairly quickly as was asked by Council President. I think that will also help us um kind of chip away and try to make that gap um smaller than what we anticipate today. So um one question that I wanted to ask, um the estimates of revenues, what numbers do we have to date? Is it, do, are we still waiting on March, April, May, um Jane, or where, where are we at with the revenues? I know we had projections, but that's kind of out the window, given kind of has happened. What numbers do we have to date?
Uh we received um a further allocation on May the twentieth. We will receive another allocation for sales tax on June the twentieth, actually, June the twenty-third. Um and we have gotten some additional um information, but, but again, um since the, since the governor delayed um for all, all but the largest um sales tax uh, uh businesses uh to delay actually reporting their receipts until the end of July, uh the numbers that we are getting are um, are low. They're much lower than they would have been quarter over quarter from last year. Um but that is primarily because people have deferred their payments. And so I am expecting that when they actually do um report their, their actual receipts um in July, that I'm hoping for a bump, um slightly larger a, a amount than we would normally receive in July. And so um right now, we have got some additional information. We do have some additional room tax information that has come in, has actually come in um a little bit more positive uh than I had thought uh back when I first spoke with you. I believe it was back in April. So that's been a, a, a positive. Um uh so I've had to adjust that upwards. Um and so we are still tracking on uh franchise fees. We're still tracking on charges for services. Um and those numbers will come more into focus as, as we hit July, when the fiscal year actually ends.
So on the May twentieth report, what numbers um are included? Like the new update that you said that we, we received?
No, that, that was a, that was the next sales tax allocation that, that we get from the state. We, we get one of those once a month and it's usually the third week of the month. And so that was only, that was only, I'm sorry, if that was a, that was misunderstood. That was only for sales tax.
So, but what, what months does it include of this year here? So it does include May, include May, include what month?
It actually included uh. Oh, March, April, yes. It was, it was, it was actually, um, it was, it was actually for, for March, April. And it was a question. Repayments, payments that some people make, plus an estimate made state of what they, they think quarter is going to be, going to be.
Okay, are those numbers given?
Actually, they're on, actually, on the state website.
Okay, okay.
But I can get you a copy, get you a copy, get you a copy of the reprint, reprint, uh reprint for the, for the website where we go to look.
I'm just, you know how we do like the sales and property tax projections in terms of our revenues? I'm just wondering, of those that we projected um and about the timeframe that we have to date, where are we at in comparison to last year? That's what I would like to see.
Okay.
And in terms also um, um, and then also kind of our expenses, where are we at versus? Because I don't think this budget allows us to see, show the community, how much have we really spent?
Okay.
And how much have we spent to date? How much have we received in revenues to date? And then a comparison to it last year around this time. I think that that's going to be helpful for us um to understand.
Okay, I can prepare that for you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Karbossi?
There you go. Thank you, Mr. President. Um I really appreciate the presentation um by the administration and uh the comments of my colleagues. I think that we have a lot of uh different ideas and I look forward to coming together and working with them to pass a balanced budget. Um I think this probably is our most important role as council members. It's an oversight role. Um but we also have to be very concerned and I believe Councilmember Chavez mentioned this. We have to be concerned about the impact on services to residents. Um there have been a lot of comments coming in, a lot of things out there on social media. Um education is very important. Social services are very important, but education has a separate district. It's a state function. Social services, which are really important, is a county function, not a city function. Doesn't mean we can't create programs and we have programs to help our residents because we are here to serve, but we need to keep our eye on the ball. Our responsibility is the safety of our residents, whether it's fire or law enforcement. It's about making sure utilities and clean water is delivered. It's about making sure that we have uh, you know, wa, waste management services like the garbage pickup. I know that's stuff we get used to or, or roads that function and sidewalks that are safe for kids, but this is really our main responsibility as a city. And I want to make sure that we keep our eye on the ball and try to provide the best quality of service even with a recession as we can. Um so if, what I will share though, this is one thing I'm thinking. Um I know that all of us want to avoid furloughs. We want to avoid any negative impacts to our city employees. But I, I will say this, this is a warning to the council. If we end up having to furlough staff, especially sworn staff, I'm going to make a motion that the council will furlough themselves and our staffs just the same way because we have a responsibility to feel the pain that we may be inflicting. And we're all in this together and we're going to have to get through this together. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Member Karbossi, thank you. I think it's fair to say that our friends at the school district across street would remind us that providing and paying for police officers is also responsible in the city and not the schools. But it's fair to say that.
I would say that. I would strongly encourage them before they decide to make that decision. They go actually talk to the teachers association and see how the teachers feel about that. How can we have community policing if our officers don't know who our kids are and what they go through every day and their personal stories because they face difficulty and sometimes school is the only, only safety they have. Thank you.
Yep. I think those are all fair comments. Um as we can see, our budget work is going to spill over to our neighbors and their budget work is going to spill over our way. So um it's going to be a challenging season for all of us who have to deal with millions of dollars of loss in revenue and find a way to make up that revenue while reducing the impact on our respective residents and constituents. With that, I'm going to go to a public comment. If there's no other council members' comments or questions, um at this time, this is the opportunity for the public to address the council on the um presentation by the mayor on his proposal for a continued resolution. If you're a member of the public, please raise, raise your hand and I will identify you by name and provide you three minutes to address the council. Um the first one that we have up on my screen is uh Carolina, Farza Deluna. You will be unmuted and you'll have three minutes to address the council. Please identify yourself um so you can begin your comments to the council. Carolina, you are now being unmuted. If this works, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
There you are. There you go.
Okay. Thank you, um city council, for taking the time to listen to my question. Um it's very concerning, looking at the last three years' budget, that we have actually increased policing vehicles and personnel and stations while not paying attention to education. And now that we find, find ourselves being severely cut in education, as the governor has mentioned, because of Corona, we have to look to the future. And we saw that the mayor proposed new police officers, new uh police cars in tradition of the past three years. So what are your commitments to not increase, much less, listen to your community that's saying defund policing and in fact, take them out of our schools? It doesn't matter what the teacher says. It's what the community and the students feel. And I want to know, what does this mean in terms of continuing to militarize? Because you also want to SWAT car and vest and a million other things. That's such a slap in the face to the community at this moment. Where, I, I'm new to budget meetings. All I'm hearing is, let's do what we did last year. Well, what we did for the past three years was increase police funding. So what are we going to do? And why have you not addressed that when we know you see the community out there and the emails are coming in? And I surrender my time, if that's what you have to do. I don't know. Or pause it.
Yes, thank you for addressing the council. The next person we have up is uh Shayna Rose. You will be unmuted. Please identify yourself and you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Hello, council. Thank you for your time. My name is Shayna Kaywood. I'm a salon owner here in the city of Fresno. I've spoke here several times. I'm coming here today to ask and beg of you guys to just make a call or an email to the Public Health Department of the state. Um the governor made an announcement on June fifth that it was up to the county to determine when we could go back to work. The county has now informed me that it's not up to the local county. It's up to the state public health department. Our nail community and esthetician community are drained in debt at this time. It's not even about getting a free handout from you guys. We just need your voices. We need you guys to advocate for us. I sat through a California Barbara and Cosmo State Board meeting yesterday. It was the most depressing thing I've ever heard, hearing the women in my commu, in, in my industry crying out in pain because businesses they've invested thousands of dollars into are now being forced to close. So many of us still haven't received unemployment or stimulus checks. I'm here to speak up for my entire industry. We need your voices. Please, please make a call, send an email. Please advocate for us because state board made it clear that it wasn't their job to advocate for us. So we need someone of power to give us a date. We cannot make business decisions without a date. We need to know. It's almost four months in that we're behind on rent. This is, this is unfair to us. We're feeling discriminated against. I've sat through this meeting and not heard our industry been mentioned once. So again, I just ask as a mother of four who desperately needs to get back to work that you just take two minutes of your time to either call the public health department or send an email to the governor because we need to get back to work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person is.
Because it's fucking hard, like.
The next person is Lisa Flores. Uh you now have three minutes to address the council. Please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Lisa Flores and I'm representing the Road and Park Small Dogs Play Group and also the Central Valley Chihuahua Club. Um I belong to, I organize the two um oldest dog play groups in Fresno. And um I see the budget and I'm, I'm not only concerned about the dog park community, but I'm also very concerned about the community in general. Um I understand wanting to get money from cares and utilizing that money um for uh the fire department, but also too, I want to see the budget both for the fire department and especially the police department. Year after year, the city basically gives the police department whatever they want. And it appears that the police department is militarizing and we need to basically stop that and go back to the community that we really are. You know, we are not a community of violence. We are not a community where you need tanks. We are not a community where you need to look. We are not a community where you need to look at a police officer and they're dressed up like they're going to war. I don't want to live in a community where someone looks like they're dressed for war. So I do want to see the overtime, I do want to see the breakdown. I understand fire departments overtime. I don't think I'm going to question that, but I will be questioning the police department. And I will be asking for point zero zero two dollars from the police budget to relocate the dog park at Roading. Mike, you talk about safety. The dog park at Roading was placed near the intersection of the off-ramp of Olive and 99. It is in the 25 percentile for the worst air quality in the state. And you put a dog park there, no shade, they just barely put saplings, we have one dying tree. When we go back to the dog park to me, we're going to be hampered by only 10 people, which is fine. But it's going to be very, very hard in the summer or even into the fall with social distancing with only one tree and one shade. We have been requesting and asking and begging for the dog park to be moved across the park. It will cost you less than $40,000. We know where we want it, nobody asked us. I even sued over it and lost. But you know, and I will continue to keep, keeping coming back and begging and asking for $40,000 to put us where we want to be, where we have trees, where we have access to water. Because that's the other thing. I'm also looking at the park's budget because that is one of the most underfunded budgets out of the entire city. You should not have people that work for the park work part-time with, you know, hardly any benefits for as much as they do and what they see. So once again, I'm looking forward to seeing a line item budget of the police department. Because I don't want to defund them, I don't like the word defund personally, but I do like the word reallocation. And as the community hit, gets hit hard, so does everybody, including the police department. Also too, I want to see the CARES Act money. How and what is the future allocation for renters assistance going into the fall? If you know the second wave is going to hit you late October, November, what is the city's plan for rent and food?
Thank you, Ms. President, for addressing the council. Next person up will be Michael Crines. You have been unmuted now and you have three minutes to address the council, please identify yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name is Michael Crines. I was born and raised in Fresno, California and am currently working in the legal department at Google. I wanted to quickly go back to something that Mayor Brand mentioned earlier and that's identifying revenue for the public or for the city. Public records show that Fresno is spending almost $2 million a year to close claims against the Fresno Police Department. And that doesn't include costs associated with pending lawsuits, nor does it include what the city is paying outside attorneys to defend those cases. Those $2 million plus dollars can easily fund programs like Advance Peace, which now has research backing its success and would still leave $1.8 million that could be invested into our communities. And to clarify, that's not just for our North Fresno community. Continuing the status quo has not helped our black and brown communities in the past. So why do we expect the status quo to help our black and brown community now? Especially when our black and brown community is being disproportionately affected by two pandemics that are currently going on. If you're wondering what those are, that's COVID and police brutality. Lastly, I see that our incoming mayor Jerry Dyer is on this call. Mr. Dyer, you referred to the Advance Peace program last year as paying gang members despite its success. I'm wondering if you're willing to apologize to that statement, considering the city is paying millions and millions of dollars to sell officers into the community. So who are the gang members? Thank you.
The council, next and that will be, that will, that will, you will be muted, please identify yourself. You have three minutes, three minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Mitcham Callahan and I'm a Fresno resident. Looking at the presentation, I was wondering why there were cuts to all the general fund budget departments except the police and fire department. I don't see why the police should have a special exemption other than the military industrial complex has completely captured our government. And that's why they have talked about, you know, federal and statewide lobbyists as well as, I think the State Department and working on like protecting them and making sure, you know, they get special advantages. I also believe, you know, when it comes to being able to have someone's life in your hands, I think the training of officers should be much better. Not just, oh yeah, you take this little, you know, thing on the computer and it tells you like, oh, how to be a better police officer. But you know, there's actually a police culture that reinforces, you know, being really conscious of these decisions and all the factors involved before taking excessive force. And also, there's been a recommendation that I've read is that officers should do less. Like, we don't need them at every school, we can have security guards. You most of the time don't need police to like shoot people at schools if that is like absolutely necessary. And in response to Karbasi's statement about social programs and, you know, focusing more on police and the fire department, I would just say social programs do uphold public safety. I mean, if we focus more on counseling for students instead of having the police like talk to students about their problems, that, you know, the counselors actually have expertise in more than police, that we, we would be much better off. Focusing on rehabilitation and restorative justice is actually much better, like statistically than punitive action by police and the mass incarceration system. And so, yeah, I don't see why the police should get these special benefits when there's surely no shortage of police in Fresno or anywhere else in America. They're certainly not lacking in funding whatsoever. I mean, if anything, they should probably be cut the most just because they're completely bloated as a department. And yeah, with that, also, I wanted to know how much is in the emergency reserve fund? I consider our council to be a very fiscally conservative council and so I would imagine there's a substantial amount within there.
Thank you for your comments. The next person is Elizabeth Robledo. You are unmuted, please identify yourself and you have three minutes to address the council. Elizabeth, can you hear us? Okay, looks like we lost you. All right, we'll go to the next person online.
Oh, I'm here, hello? Can you hear me?
There you are, you're back.
I am so sorry.
It's okay, you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, so my question, my name is Elizabeth Robledo. I'm actually a teacher for Fresno Unified and I actually live in Kermin. So my question is centered around healthcare. And specifically, it is centered around a proposal that Governor Newsom has created and in an effort to provide relief with regard to prescription drug costs. So our governor has moved CalPERS and Medi-Cal to, over to negotiated drug prices, a fee for service and a way for managed care. This has yielded a savings to the state of California and estimated a $200 to $300 million a year just from the Medi-Cal portion alone. Los Angeles County has signed on to this and is using this purchasing bargaining power for the, for the state of California. So I'm asking, would the city of Fresno also look into this and hopefully save untold amounts of money from employee benefits while maintaining the quality of healthcare benefit in Fresno?
Great, thank you for your question.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, next person is Ivanka Saunders, please identify yourself and you have to address the council.
Hello, my name is Ivanka Saunders and these opinions are my own personal opinions, not related as an advocate. Usually I'm coming in front of the council as an advocate of my daytime job. Today's budget, when we're discussing these hearings, so often we have the police department wanting their hands out for any available funds. And when we're talking about cares dollars, when we heard from Shayna Rose nearly in tears begging for help, these dollars need to be faced, displaced with the main issues related to COVID. And when we're talking about 30% or what percentage of cares dollars can help fund or alter what the police are already getting, I ask everyone that's from the public on here to help me do a little bit of research. Compare, just Google, the largest cities in Fresno, the largest cities in California. The other cities that are going to come up in average size that are near ours are going to be places like Sacramento, Long Beach, Oakland. Right now, every city is posting their budgets, they're posting what their police department budgets are. When we think about a 500,000 population, are we as criminally impacted the way some of these other metropolises are? Look at what they're spending for their police department and what we are spending on ours. And then it'll give us a better idea of how aligned our city's police department's funds really are and should be. We know already that COVID is affecting the black and brown populations across this country. If we don't try, we have an opportunity to cover a problem that our city has been having way before COVID even occurred. With our homelessness, with our economic problems, we are given an opportunity to just slap on the excuse of it being COVID and actually cover the issues that we already had. But instead, we want to increase police? We want to increase departments that don't need an increase in funding or overtime? So I'm asking the public, I'm asking even you as the council members, if you haven't compared your budget to other cities, the way Mayor Brand, you're saying you have, well, shame on us for not seeing how much more we're spending compared to cities that have true crime and true issues. A lot of our problems with our police department is that we continue to have a status quo, just enough crime so we can keep looking like we're really worse than we really are, to keep grant funding, federal funding to coming in. We have houses in my neighborhood, one bad apple. How often does the whole good working community complain about that one bad apple? But you'll still see white folks coming into southwest Fresno that look like they themselves are the undercover cops, dropping off at that one crack house and nothing happens to shut down that home. Why? Because statistically, our police department needs that to stay in place so that they can actually rank that we have a problem, that is a problem that's being a cyclical problem created by our police department. These opinions are my own, they are not of who I work for. I usually come in front of you as a representative and advocate. And today, I'm just fed up. We should be doing better as a city, this is not a little Mississippi. We do live in California, we shouldn't be as backwards in our thinking as we are. We have people of all colors hurting right now because of the crisis. All people of all races, religions could use a whole lot of help and that answer is not increasing the police department's funds. Thank you.
Council President, you're muted.
Hi, my name's, can you guys hear me?
Go ahead, Zach.
Hi, my name is Zach Maroney, I'm a resident of District 2, I'm a high school math teacher. I come partially representing Fresno DSA and the Fresno Sunrise Movement. My main goal is to encourage the city council and the mayor to defend, defund our police department as much as possible, since the police take around 50% of our budget. We don't need armed persons with minimal education and training, basically conditioned to believe that they are warriors under assault, worming our streets, looking for trouble. My cousin's a police officer, I've done ride-alongs with him. He's driving around looking for brown people to pull over, harass, he escalates with them when he gets to the people's window. It's completely unnecessary. We don't need armed people to take reports of domestic abuse. We don't need armed people to have a 0% solve rate for burglaries. We basically need them almost at zero times, ever. I really think that our police work could be much better done by preventing the causes of crime in the first place, which include housing, medical, medical care and education. And that's all I have to say, I yield my time.
Thank you for addressing the council. Next person up is Sartana Major, please identify yourself and you have three minutes to address the council.
Yes, peace, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
All right, first, thank you to Mr. Adias for, for your words of showing accountability by making sure that we have and see what that budget looks like on regards to these departments. I'm hoping that you also extend that to the community so we can also see what you uncover with the requests that you've asked from the city. I really feel that we are in a very critical point where we'll have to look at our budget more critical, more respective in the sense of what makes the best sense for Fresno to continue to have economic growth with the small amount that we are going to be having. But I also think that it is very, very critical that we look at incubation or small businesses, entrepreneurships, especially in the African-American community that have been mostly impacted by the war on drugs. When we talk about police brutality, when we talk about a lot of these issues. I also want to push everybody that came out and gave great support and good words to Black Lives Matters and everything with George Floyd, but what about our people here? The young brother, London Wallace, still has not received justice for being punched in the face by police unjustifiably. Little Azalea Murrieta, who's one of my little homies, rest in peace, has still not received justice. And to have our new mayor that's going to be coming in lie, talk about, and we got the recording of video, he lied, he got shot in the torso, no, he got shot in the back of the head. So that right there, we need to have better accountability with words that were spoken before because the case is closed. And I don't want to intrude the family because I don't know if there's settlement, anything going on. And I want to leave that respectful, but I think we need to do a better job of just fact checking and also having accountability. It shouldn't just be the, the small group of people that are having those close relationships and conversations with city council and elected leaders on what to do with the community. We are saying as a community, one person, me, with, with relationships with, with other community folks out here that's on the ground, that's on the, on the, on the, on the, on the streets, we need accountability, we need inclusivity. We cannot continue to rely just on a few to make decisions for our city. So in saying that, I appreciate some of the efforts that are coming out of District 3, the presence that they were at the, at the, at the rally in March that we had on Southwest. I'm just hoping that we continue to see this from other city council members, from Luis Chavez from District 5. Where is he at in the conversation and pushing for better accountability with police? So with that being said, I really appreciate this conversation that's being held. I hope on Thursday we can look more into what those itemized lines are on regards to what the money is going to be spent on the police budget and allow us, community, to be inclusive, not just make decisions right there in that day, but allow more time for us to review, to make recommendations and appropriately engage our communities that are impacted by the war on drugs. And last thing I'll say is, where is the, the follow-up with the conversation on how this tax revenue that is going to be coming up from the cannabis? How is that going to be impacting our communities? We know that there is going to be a percentage, 10%, I believe, from the Measure 8, that's going to go to a community benefit fund, which we have said before, but now publicly, we want to ensure that economic development is at the forefront of what this 10% is going to do to create economic mobility and economic development for communities that have been impacted with a strong focus in the African-American community.
Thank you, Ms. President. Matthew, you are now being unmuted and you have three minutes to address the council. Please identify yourself.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Woodward and I am a frequent attendee of the city of Fresno's Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And I have been working alongside the task force on B-PAC for Slow Streets in Fresno. We've got a petition right now that's circulating and it just passed its first milestone of about 100 signatures, making its way to 200. And it was also mentioned by Mark Horsekowski in his, in his column over the weekend in the Fresno Bee. What we're asking is potentially somewhere around, this project could cost just around $100,000. In the city of Oakland, their slow streets program allowed people to get out and social distance where they don't have parks in their neighborhoods by just simply closing the streets to through vehicle traffic with just a simple sign at like different ends of a road to let cars know that only through vehicle, no vehicle, no through vehicle traffic is allowed and only residents can go onto those roads while allowing people to walk and bike on city streets. We think this project in doing slow streets in Fresno could allow people in neighborhoods that don't have adequate parks access to get out and exercise during, while the coronavirus is still impacting us. And, uh, it would be a, it could be a relatively cheap project to implement and I, well, I understand the city is going through a budget crisis and I think maybe potentially the CARES Act funding could be it would be a great use for the, for that funding to do a Slow Streets program here in Fresno. Um, I would, uh, also note to, uh, on a different note, I would like to just, uh, say that, uh, as a student at Bullard High School, I remember there only being, ever being four counselors on a campus that has over two thousand students. Um, as far as like the whole defund the police department thing that's going around, I'd say that, uh, a school with that many students definitely deserves to have way more counselors. And that is well said for every school in this city. We need more counselors, we need more social services and stuff like that, whether it's from the county or the city. I think we should be putting less money into our police department and more into people who can help our youth. Um, thank you, I yield the rest of my time.
Kimberly McCoy, you're up next, you now have the floor, please identify yourself.
Thank you, Council President, my name is Kimberly McCoy. I normally come here as well, as Ivanka said, representing, um, my organization that I work for. But this morning, I represent myself as a resident of, of Fresno. Um, it's very disappointing to see the presentation from the mayor and see the proposed budget cuts across the board, as it says, ten percent in every department, but we know that the departments that are gonna suffer the most are the Parks Department and then other projects like infrastructure and things like that. Um, as it currently stands, the police department gets fifty-three percent of our budget and our Parks Department gets six percent. We really need to start investing in our community, we need to start investing in our residents, and we need to start investing in our youth. I think right now is the time for our city to stand up to be a model to every city that's going through the recent activities and, and step up and show that we care and we invest and we create programs. And we built relationships with people, we are being held accountable, there's transparency. Um, as a mother that has a black son, me and my husband, we have conversations all the time of not only does he has to teach him how to be a man, that's second, he has to teach him how to maneuver as a black man in the city. We have to show him how to conduct himself when we know that we are raising him right. That we know that we are instilling values and morals in our son that can help him be a productive citizen in the city. But from the day he was born, he was faced with odds. One, he was black. Two, he was a black man. It's time to invest in our communities that have not been disinvested in for years. We shouldn't have to come to council every year during budget talks to ask for something that is a necessity in order for us to get through life, in order for us to be productive. It shouldn't be like this. I think it's time for you guys to stand up and show that you hear us, you see us, acknowledge us. I think the time is now. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy, the next person is DeAngeli Jackson, you will now be unmuted, you have three minutes to address the council. Please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is DeAngeli Jackson and I was honestly, um, I just wanted to, to come on and just listen to what everybody else had to say. I, uh, and once again, just gonna urge on behalf of just people within my immediate circle and, and those that I've been able, um, to speak with over the last week since we were able to host um, our demonstration in, in downtown Fresno. I, I really urge you all to not, uh, continue the financial budget the way that it is with the amount of funding that we have towards our police department, there's so many other places that we can invest that money into. I especially hope that we're not considering as a city increasing the amount of finances going to our police department when we are, um, considered to be like one of the top poorest, if not the poorest city in the entire country. We know that West and Southwest Fresno are struggling extremely economically. Um, we know that there is an entire community of, uh, Fresno, uh, community just members who were severely affected by the building of the Highway Ninety-Nine. I think instead of putting more money into our police department, we could maybe look at, um, providing funding back to those community members who lost their homes, um, because of that highway being put up and no immediate decision was made by the city to, um, give them any type of, um, just, yeah, like just, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, reparations for, for what happened, there we go. Um, so yeah, I just, I look forward to continuing this conversation with all of our elected officials that we have on the call here today. And I just once again want to urge you all to really consider, um, decreasing the amount of money that we're giving to our police department and instead consider investing it back into the communities that have been, um, hit the hardest by uh, previous laws and, and previous elected officials, as well as looking at putting it back into our school districts and our education system. We have students who are struggling, um, very heavily right now, especially when we're talking about our brown and black children in our districts. Um, we, we need the support there more than anywhere else, so that way we can continue to foster the great leaders of tomorrow that will go on to lead the Central Valley, um, and represent us in such an admirable way. But in order to get there, we have to pour back into them. Um, and with that, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. The next person is Alexandria Ramos Ocasey. You have been unmuted, please address the council.
Hey, everyone, my name is Alexandria Ramos Ocasey, born and raised in Fresno, um, longtime community member here and very invested, especially with the youth. Um, just recently, um, for those of you who don't know if I'm not spending my time organizing and working on campaigns, I am working directly in classrooms with Fresno City College students. And they mean the world to me because, uh, it is part of our family, a long line of teachers. That's how we came to be in the valley and those are the people that we want to put first, and especially our young students of color and our communities of color. So that is why I'm here today to specifically request that we defund the Fresno Police Department. We have tried reform over and over and over again. Fifty-three percent of an entire city's budget is not justifiable to a militarized organization that continuously kills people of color. It is not acceptable and there is nothing conservative about giving fifty-three percent of a budget to a militarized organization. That is unacceptable. It shows that we have no, we have no means and no reason to trust our city council members, even those that do show up for a photo op if you will consistently give FPD that many millions of dollars. That creates mistrust in the community and is only going to continue the violence. And more importantly, for those of you who do not think that defunding is option, look at what the police department is doing. Even our own military members are trained better and would not ever shoot citizens in those situations. They would literally be kicked out of the military half the time, but somehow we have conservative people who somehow think that it is acceptable to give people military-grade weapons, military-grade machinery to police communities of color. That is not acceptable, there is nothing conservative about it, what it is is upholding white supremacy. I want to repeat that, that is upholding white supremacy. If those communities are constantly asking you for reform, for people like the officer who shot Isaiah in the back of the head to have at least some accountability, some sort of consequence, and we have yet to see anything. Understand that this is a moment in history where all of you are being watched, all of you are being watched very carefully. Even those of you that say support, if we do not see that in the budget, if we do not see a cut, we know you are lying to us again. So please understand, like MLK said, and like many other activists have said, the budget is a moral document. And so in that budget, every time that you choose to put more money towards a police force that has consistently killed students of mine, friends of mine, family of mine, my sister almost died because of a family member who was in law enforcement, because they are specifically trained here locally to shoot if they do not get a response. My sister almost died in her own house because of that specific training. So even if you want to say that you support the cops, understand that the way that you train them also hurts them and their families. If you are training people to shoot and kill on the spot with, without having a de-escalation, but somehow nurses, bartenders, school officials can somehow de-escalate violent situations, but somehow we're not gonna hold our police officers accountable when, I'm sorry, that's laughable to me.
Thank you, Ms. Papagia.
At de-escalating than a police officer, defund FPD, thank you.
Thank you. The next person, the last person is Gary Hunt, please identify yourself and you're being unmuted to address the council for three minutes.
Hey, good morning, Council, I'm Gary Hunt, I'm a longtime citizen of Fresno, born and raised, but also lived in other cities. Um, I think I need to give you guys a history lesson on police. Those of you in the public, please listen up, the last woman made a good comparison of why African Americans and people of brown skin are being dominated by police. Police did not exist prior to slavery. Slave owners created police to protect their property, which were human beings. If a slave ran away or got disorderly, they were ordered to be killed by the police, which were overseers at the time. Blow the back of their heads out and drag them down the streets or the roads at that particular time, so the rest of the slaves could see what happened to him or her so they would not repeat the same thing of escaping and wanting freedom. Police culture has not changed, but here's something you have to ask yourselves. When the fire department was hosing us down from the twenties through the forties through the sixties and all of a sudden in the early seventies, the fire department stopped being abusive towards people of brown skin, why didn't the culture of the police change? Police didn't have fire hoses, the fire department did, but their culture changed. Ask yourself why the police culture didn't change. You have white supremacy throughout America, you have white supremacy that governs itself through the banks and financial institutions, through the educational institutions. Our mayor is practically begging for dollars from COVID money, I'm sorry, for COVID money to go to the police department. These are people that support white supremacy, they may not openly say it, but they do support it because of a history, it's a culture. It's a dynamic that's in the gene pool. Now, I ask you, we are the people of the government. We say where we want our money to go, you have the power, whether you know this or not, you don't have to beg these people not to defund the police or alter the currency that they receive. You pay the taxes that pays the salary of these police and fire departments and public servants. I was a public servant for thirty years, for thirty-two years. You don't have to give up your money to a cause that's going to be detrimental to your life and to your health, understand that you have the power. We need to come together and have a forum. I'd be willing to facilitate this forum and get people from around the country to come and speak to us to let us know how this is done. Now that you've heard me, ask yourself something, what can you do? You can speak up and be angry about the tax dollars that you're putting out because you are paying tax dollars through the things that you purchase and through your job, money being taken that you don't see. This is your tax dollars, you work hard for them. But you don't need to die for them because of the in-train and properly in-trained and the domestic violence and the domestic terrorists that we employ. So I ask you again, come sit at the table together, conquer and divide, divide and conquer, it's the same rule. But at the end of the day, it's still a white-dominated society that governs us all. Get out and vote and we have to change what we see. I traveled around the country quite often. In cities of color, I see white men governing these cities of color. I see police officers that are white governing these cities of color, why is that? White dominance.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you for addressing the council. Council, that concludes our public comment for this period. Before I move on to the next agenda item, I'd like to give the council one last opportunity to make any motions on the mayor's proposed continuing resolution. Is there any council members that wish to make any budget motions before we move on to the next item? Uh, actually, let me unmute you guys to make sure you guys can hear. Councilmember Sparza, your hand's up, go ahead.
Uh, yes, Council President, I, I think in light of, uh, not just these public comments that we've received here, this handful, but also in light of, uh, all the different emails, um, that we as council members have received, and I believe the mayor has received as well from the general public here in Fresno, um, you know, leading up to the police department budget presentation on, on Tuesday. Um, I, I think there's, uh, an appetite from the public, uh, to get as much information as possible. And so I, I do know the line item is available, uh, online, uh, but I would, uh, request that the administration bring, uh, you know, do the best they can to consolidate, um, uh, amount of information and bring it uh, forth for the, uh, general presentation on, uh, Tuesday, next Tuesday.
City manager, are you hearing the council members' request? Just want to make sure we avoid any confusion.
Uh, are you, I'm sorry, are, are you talking about Monday's presentation for PD?
Is, uh, is, yeah, sorry, is, uh, yes, Monday's presentation for, for PD. Uh, I'm sorry, it was Tuesday, we have budget hearings both days.
So did you want a line item detail?
Yes, more or less, for, for the public, you know, for, I mean, it's available on the, the city website, but for, you know, the public's understanding. Um, uh, there's a lot of, uh, interest, obviously, you know, based on the, uh, correspondence we're getting as elected officials. And then we'll be here to hear the public comments, so to the best of your ability, trying to, uh, bring that, that line item information, uh, to the presentation.
We can, we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, city manager, can you also, I know the, um, budget, the current budget is posted on the website, but can you just separate the police budget and post that separately so people can, um, easily identify the police budget for next week's, or next.
Yeah, well, yeah, we can split it out and load it as a separate file.
Perfect, thank you. All right, council, any other requests, uh, before we move on? Council, Ms. Ariah?
Yeah, so, um, just kind of in light of similar to questions and comments that are being made and kind of the, the moment in time that we are um, for more transparency, I know that the line item budget is gonna be, you know, posted so that folks can access it much more, um, easily. However, one of the things that I think is gonna be important, and I know that, uh, at least every single budget um, time I go through the line item budget and ask, um, in more detail what those charges are for or the expenses, because if we go down to like, again, to the twenty-twenty proposed budget and you look at um, items that go like the liability self-insurance charges, in the last two years, it went from two point six to four point seven million dollars. Um, I think it is important for the public to understand, because even as council members, I have to ask every single time to be reminded as to what's up, what does that mean? You know, what is it going for? Why is it that we, why in the last two years we've increased that line item budget for two million dollars? Um, what's the difference between premium pay and overtime? Um, why are we spending, you know, um, I don't know how many, I'll go back to the line item on some of those. So just, just to prepare you guys so that when we come to the, to the discussion of, um, of our police department, folks are, are much more aware of what those expenses are. Okay. Um, also, I know that in the past, and you know, I know that we're not in the day of discussing the, the police budget, but in the past, I think last year, I brought the idea um, and I brought it up in discussion in terms of our homeless task force and how you know, we have a special unit within our police department. I know that in other cities, they do it differently. In, I think the city of Long Beach, they use firefighters. Um, so what is the message that we're sending when we're trying to address the homelessness issue? And so I'd like this council to really consider this year to try to shift that. And I would like the administration to rethink about how we service our homeless population or people experiencing homelessness in a different way. Yes, there are gonna be those instances where we're gonna need our police officers to go out, you know, when there's some, something um, that, you know, a crime happening or, or whatnot, where folks are gonna be gonna need the backup, but I think that we need to rethink how we service our community. And so I would like to really, um, restructure that and not have a homeless task force be staffed by police. I would like actually us to look at, um, our, our CBOs that are already doing the work and when we need police, the police be there to back them up. Um, I, I also believe it'll save us some money. Um, so I would like to, to move that this new bu- this budget, even though it's gonna be, uh, whatever it ends up being at the end, it reflects that. whatever it ends up being at the end, it reflects that we're moving away from, from that, because we're criminalizing homelessness and poverty, and I don't like that message that we send. So we need to really rethink, rethink that in this budget cycle and as an opportunity also for cost savings.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
What's the motion?
The motion is not to use police to staff a homeless task force. That police should go you know, when the, when the backup is needed. So I want to rethink of how do we address dealing with encampments, dealing with people experiencing homelessness, not sending a police officer. So moving away from the criminalization versus providing the social services that folks need. But understanding that police will be there to back, to back up.
Not necessarily using the firefighters, though. That's just something you want to talk about, but that's.
No, I just mentioned that in other communities, they don't use our police department. They use the firefighters to do that offering.
Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, with that, the motion has been made. It's been seconded. Councilmember Brettafield.
Clarifying question. Go ahead, Jane.
I, I just wanted to know who, who did the second, was that you, Council President?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for their asking for a clarification, Jane. All right, counsel, member Brettafield, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just, as Merle, I want to just clarify. So are you saying that you don't want the police to be the homeless task force? You want to remove the police from having the homeless task force? You don't want the homeless task force anymore?
So restructuring our, how we service our homelessness and the encapment issue, I don't necessarily think that that we need the police to do all that work. They could be out doing, you know, other things versus going out and removing encampments. I think there's a better way of doing it. We know that in some instances, we may need, you know, the whoever ends up doing the work. And so that's why I want to put that up for discussion and engage our CBOs and social workers to, let's talk about how we, we better do that. But understanding that if they need backup, then our police department will be there.
So that is something that we would discuss as your motion. It's not something, but that, your, but your motion is to.
I'm proposing that we do restructure it. Whatever that ends up being, I think we need to engage our homelessness experts that we've been working with in our committee. You know, you're part of the committee as well, and Miguel is part of the committee, but we need to have a serious conversation about how, how we go about that.
Okay, I mean, because that's not something that, I mean, I don't know any other way we could do do that effectively, because, you know, as, as we've been told by our law enforcement that many of these folks, you know, when there is a problem going on, th, these are folks that unfortunately have weapons and place people in some potential jeopardy. And these are people sometimes who are at businesses, who are causing problems. And so I don't know any other way that's safe for people to deal with people who might be threatening. People who might be causing property damage. And certainly those instances have happened. And part of why we developed the homeless task force was to deal with the uproar and complaints from our constituents who are having those difficulties, still have those difficulties. Now, clearly, you know, we're all on the same task force. We've spent millions of dollars to help people and get them housed. I think it's been effective. And, but I still think, you know, we're, we still have this problem. And so we'll have the discussion. It's not something that I think I could support removing our officers from dealing with people in those certain circumstances. So I want the homeless task force. I think it's also been effective. But, you know, we certainly should have the discussion if that's what you feel.
Okay, council members, there is a motion. It's seconded, and we'll include it on the list of items to discuss when we get to the point of discussing each of the merits of each of the motions. Councilmember Rossy, I saw your hand raised.
Oh, no, I just, I'm liking the feedback I'm getting from everyone. I think that, I think a discussion's a good idea, at least to have the discussion and see if maybe there are better, better practices out there. I agree. I don't know if we're gonna get to a point where we can completely eliminate law enforcement from that factor, but I like the idea because a lot of it with the homeless issue is a lot of people face mental health crisis. Now, our PD, we have sworn officers that get extensive training and they're called eight acre units. But they're usually called on scene when we have families in crisis to help and connect those families with services and do triage in that moment. Maybe more training like that would be in order to supplement that. So I, I think there's room to improve, and I look forward to the conversation, but in the end, we have to consider the impact it's gonna have on the public. And I think we all want to improve the quality of that. So I get it.
Councilmember Sparza, I see your hands up.
Yeah, just to piggyback off of this conversation, I, again, it's definitely a conversation worth exploring. And I think, you know, as, as we, as we discuss it and discuss shifting, it's worth having any data that might be available in terms of those calls that the homeless task force is responding to. What, what level of them are the nature where a police officer is required per Councilmember Brettafield's comments? So I think if we, if we had some data that might guide our decisions a little, a little better. Right? You know, maybe, you know, we're looking at take, you know, I think there's six folks, six officers currently on the task force. You know, if we decide we could reduce that by maybe one-third, how many of the civilian personnel would that translate into? Would it translate into three folks or four folks? And then again, what proportion of those calls really, you know, are requiring a police officer? So I'd like to know that before we, you know, make any of those very impactful.
Thank you, counsel. So it's clear, city manager would like the police chief to provide us a presentation on the homeless task force to give us a better context before we have to vote on the motion or the budget, if that would be helpful. From my perspective, I've been on a couple of rides with the homeless task force. And to your point, there is a lot of officers. And I think from my perspective, there's a need for the homeless task force, but there's also a need to find cost savings and improve response time for folks who are calling 911. So as much as we can reassign officers to responding to 911 calls and find some budget savings and maybe staff that homeless task force with social workers and CBOs to deal with the homeless on a daily basis. That might be prudent time to have that conversation and bring it to conclusion. So with that, city council, we will move to the next item. Jane? I have the next item showing as a general fund overview of the Budget Management Studies Division. Is that the case? Or was that a?
I, I have it as the city attorney's office.
That's what they did.
Oh, that's what you did already. So. You're right. Thank you, city attorney. The next presentation is the city attorney. We will now turn on his video, and he has a formal presentation. So after his presentation, we'll go to public comment, and then we'll go to the council.
It won't let me turn on.
No, I know. It takes a second for me.
All right, counsel, we're just working on getting Doug's face on TV. Okay, his presentation will be just as good as his face. City attorney, you have the floor.
If you go to page two of that presentation. Next page. All right, counsel, I was going to handle this the way I traditionally do, and feel free as we go to stop me and ask questions if you like. First, an overview for authorized positions in our office. Now that we have code enforcement, we now have twenty-three attorneys, twelve managers and supervisors, and two secretaries. Paralegals. The paralegals handle both litigation and responsive PRs. Six people in accounting, accounting, fifty-six inspectors in living code. An overview of this, we're divided into three divisions, litigation, transactions. And code. Litigation handles, that's both in-house and managing outside counsel. It also includes three lawyers and personnel and the support staff, and the balance is largely responding to Public Records Act requests. Of course, when it comes to litigation, the majority of that is handled by outside counsel. We handle what we can in-house, and to the extent we can handle litigation in-house, it saves about $100,000 per year per lawyer when we can do that. Our budget and team to respond to PRAs has grown substantially in the last few years based upon the changes in state law as far as police records that are subject to being produced now. Our budget probably includes between $500,000 and $600,000 a year just to respond to Public Records Act requests. A lot of that now is reviewing police videos that previously were not necessarily produced. Under transactions, that includes lawyers and support staff that largely handle everything that goes to counsel. As well as ethics and conflicts and those types of issues. A big part of that is procurement, purchasing, and so forth. And then the third division, of course, is code. There are approximately ninety positions total in code. If you then go to the next page, code is divided up into several sub-units. The first is community compliance led by Tim Burns. That is essentially what we've done. Budget, but. Getting feedback. Getting divided up into council district teams, largely based upon need. We started that, I think, in January, and that seems to be working well. Then on the next page, we have the other units, which include rental housing. That's both asset and traditional rental housing issues as well as proactive rental housing inspections. Then finally, we have the special teams. That's led by Aaron and Rodney. That includes the, the things that have traditionally been sort of the special items like picking up waste tires. We have a grant that covers that expense. Demolition buildings when they are dangerous and need to be torn down. Dumping and abatement, the new unit we added when we brought that function in-house. That is fully up and running now. We have the equipment. We have four people running that. That is probably going to save approximately $100,000 a year doing that in-house versus sending it out to contract. Cleaning up vacant lots and cutting tall weeds and that sort of thing. And then the school area team, which is the area, the team that works focusing on proactive enforcement around schools. And then finally, we have the clerical functions with all of this going on. Of course, we have to bill for fines and contracts and so forth. So that is essentially how the office is divided, including code enforcement. Next page. Significant activities going on now. Of course, like I was saying, PRA responses have become extremely consuming. It takes a lot of people to handle it. We try to get them out on time when we can. The SB forty-one and AB seven forty-eight, the new laws that require more responses to police records. We are substantially through getting caught up on those. Some cases may involve looking at literally hundreds of hours of video that has to be reviewed before being produced. So that, that's a big part of what they do. There is still a lot of development going on, subdivision maps and so forth, that our land use team is working on, as well as the specific plan, general plan, PEIR, housing elements and various ERs, including cannabis and so forth. We are always involved in election, campaign, ethics and conflicts issues. The, we have three lawyers doing personnel, and they are involved in disciplines, civil service, civil service board appeals, contracts, and then at times labor negotiations. And of course, we have a large number of complex contracts, resolutions and ordinances. Just this Thursday, for example, there is about $12 million of spending going on. Our office would be involved in all of the contracts that it takes to do that. Code enforcement, as I mentioned, we moved to the district teams. And then as we've seen through the emergency year, the code enforcement people essentially become the city's utility players. Being assigned as needed to help out with, for example, delivering masks to small businesses, and then, of course, helping out with the emergency issues. I will note that, you know, recently, we prevailed on the water capacity fee case. That will be a substantial assistance in helping with water infrastructure in the future. So that's essentially what's going on. And then the final page. Wanted to overview where our budget is and what we could do to save money if necessary. The budget approved for the current fiscal year was seventeen million, eighty-nine thousand, two hundred. That was after a $250,000 line item veto from the mayor last July. In March, the council approved moving $250,000 from our budget to the small business loan program. But that was with a stipulation that as a condition of that, any funds remaining in our balance at the end of this fiscal year would be rolled over to the next fiscal year. That will be an estimated $668,000. So following that through, take the seventeen million minus 250,000, that's sixteen, eight, thirty-nine. If you add back 668,000, that would bring our proposed budget to seventeen million, five hundred and seven thousand, two hundred dollars. That's with a total authorized positions of one hundred and thirty-three. We have nine currently vacant. We have every intention of not filling vacancies for now until we have further council direction. That's both the currently vacant and anything that may become vacant. Bringing the, as I mentioned, with a potential savings, bringing abatement in-house is approximately $100,000. Leaving those nine positions unfilled alone is about $600,000 per year. Additional attrition potential, we think we can save $200,000. That would include $75,000 for law clerks that they are currently vacant now. If we don't hire anymore, then we can save $75,000 there. Reducing travel and training, we can save about $100,000. If we delay equipment and fleet replacement, as well as, you know, computers, other types of equipment, except as critically necessary, we can save about $200,000 a year. So that alone amounts to about 1.2 million. If we were directed to save more than that, I think we can come up with additional savings that would not significantly impact services to the community or to the clients or to our employees. I will note that our budget did include $50,000 for right-side counsel for the administration for second opinions. None of that was used. And at this point, we were freezing overtime. We have been requested to incur overtime over the past fiscal year, both for responses to Public Records Act requests and for code enforcement. Instead of incurring additional overtime for code enforcement, for example, in evenings and especially weekends, what we've done is adjust schedules. So instead of paying overtime on a Saturday, we'll have somebody work Tuesday through Saturday. So that's their normal schedule. That's what we've been doing throughout the emergency, and that appears to be working. Some people even prefer doing that. And so we will do our best to avoid any additional overtime and with whatever additional savings goes along with that. So I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council at this time? Councilmember Sparza, we have you punched up, and then Councilwoman Missoria.
Yeah, thank you, Doug, for a very informative presentation. I know that, you know, within your existing budget, you folks have been able to pick up, you know, even, you know, even though you had some attrition during COVID and and we're operating at a lower capacity than usual, you were able to fold in a lot of these COVID-related activities within staff, right? I'm talking about enforcement of our emergency orders and such. So I mean, roughly, how much would you say, how much effort and capacity has gone in that, in that particular direction of enforcing COVID-related measures?
I'd say at least half of the code enforcement staff has been reassigned to work on COVID. We are billing against the CARES money for that. I can get you a number of what that would amount to over the last couple of months. It's about $650,000 right now.
Okay, $650,000. And that's in the span of, I mean, the last.
Two months, since March.
March, okay, three months or so. No, I was curious. You know, I know something we haven't done actively here in the city is proactively enforce the wearing a mask. I mean, we have the emergency order, but the mayor has made it clear that he's not too interested in enforcing that. And so I was curious if we had some, some level of light swamp enforcement. You know, how many full-time equivalents that might translate into, what additional resources? uh, what additional resources, uh, you might need to, to have, uh, some light enforcement on, uh, on something such as the wearing of masks.
Well, we have been enforcing code, has been out to businesses. We enforce against the business, not necessarily the individuals. Uh, they get warnings and I believe some have been fined for not enforcing it. Uh, if we need to commit more people to do that, then we can.
Okay, yeah, well, I mean, uh, there, there's, there's finances and resources and then there's the actual people capacity, right? And so, uh, you know, I, I would just curious if, you know, you had, had it within existing capacity, if given the resources to kind of ramp that, uh, ramp that up? Or if it would require, uh, filling those vacancies or, or, you know, what your thoughts were on that?
Uh, I don't think right now it would require filling vacancies. We can simply reassign people from, for example, the council district teams to go out and do that. That the way we've been enforcing lately has been on a complaint-driven basis. If we need to move to more of a proactive basis, we're out just randomly inspecting. We can reassign people. That just means we'll be doing less of other types of things, but we can do that.
Okay, thanks Doug.
All right, Councilmember Missoria, I think you're up next.
Thank you, Council President. Um, thank you, City Attorney, for the information. I think, um, it gives us at least, uh, a picture of where there's opportunities to save in the remainder of the fiscal year, um, to kind of address the, the shortfall that we will have. Um, just to ask, um, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that were transferred, um, over to the small business loan, um, was that accounted, that wasn't accounted as an annual savings, given the fact that there's been conversations about potential, um, I guess reimbursement, back reimbursement through the federal cares act, does it?
Right, we, if, I think if we take action to convert the loans to grants, then we may be able to reimburse that from cares money. And I'm told from budget that our budget was determined by the status of our, uh, approved budget as of May fifteenth. So as of May fifteenth, that two hundred and fifty had already been deducted. So you, it would take a council motion to put it back.
Okay. But at least we know as a council that, okay, so you've already said we have a, around one point two million cost savings or potential annual savings, um, that if that is added, it puts us up to one point four five. Um, and then, you know, I don't know if you follow.
You're recapturing it with cares money.
Yeah, um, Jane, for purposes of, you know, addressing the gap and seeing and to show, you know, the public where we would, um, address the gap. So if there's potential, um, savings here, does that mean the gap will then be if we have a one point four five, um, annual savings, that the gap would now be about five point five? Is that what we're? Cause did, did we say we have like a seven million dollar gap this year? I think you're on mute, Jane.
No, she's, she's unmuted. I just want to have she is muted.
Yes, woman. Go ahead, Jane.
We're up now.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, yeah, it would potentially, uh, some of that savings, um, that, that was identified as, uh, not filling positions may have already been counted in, in, um, uh, the presentation under the fact that we were restricting hiring. Um, but yes, certainly some, see other savings that City Attorney, uh, but yeah, would contribute to, um, lessening the debt, lessening it, uh, for this fiscal, fiscal year.
What about the six hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, um, could be re-reimbursable by the federal cares act? So if we use the federal cares act to pay for, for the work, the work that the COVID work that was done, um, is there a six hundred and fifty thousand dollars six, annual savings, um, to the budget? And so therefore making the gap smaller.
Well, it wouldn't be annual, it, it, it.
Well, for this year.
But yeah, I mean, um, we have to go in and see. I know that there is some, there's some reimbursement for those expenses. Uh, and so, yeah, at, at least part of that money would be eligible and, and could go towards, uh, reducing expenditures, uh, for this fiscal year. Uh, and again, uh, making the gap narrower.
Yeah, okay, so, and you know, I think that the, this presentation in terms of the first department presentation is a good, um, presentation demonstrating that there is room to see annual savings. And I hope that as the next directors for other departments, um, are coming before the council, they do something similar so that we can get at least somewhat of a picture as to where are their savings? Because if there aren't any savings, we are gonna have to look at, you know, as we move forward, at what we're gonna cut if, um, we don't get, um, the federal help that we, you know, are anticipating to get through the federal cares act reimbursement. So I think that this is a, a good example of that. And, um, at least it demonstrates that within one department, we're able to save not just one point two, maybe a little bit more. And given the fact that they've been doing an outstanding job in addressing COVID-related work, that that actually is gonna help us because now we're gonna be able to get six hundred and fifty thousand dollars reimbursed, um, because they were proactively, um, working on COVID-related work. So that, I just wanted to make, make those comments. Um, the other, um, question that I had for the City Attorney, I know that in the line up, line item budget, there was, um, I think miscellaneous expenditures and, you know, it was about a hundred some thousand dollars. Is that already included in the potential annual savings? Um, and moving forward, is that a line item budget where, where we could see reductions that wouldn't impact the work that, that we do?
Uh, yes, the, what I proposed was not necessarily per line item. It might, it might overlap several line items. For example, uh, vehicles, equipment, computers and so forth. Uh, we can get you something more specific if you would like, as far as line items. Uh, but, but when we're talking about, uh, the two hundred thousand, that was a broad category that would span several types of line items.
Yeah, it was kind of across the board, much, much as we had anticipated doing for, for the rest of the general fund departments. It's, it's really would be up to the department to determine where best to take that money with a minimal impact to operations.
Yeah, and I think that it's good to provide us options because at the end of the day, a lot of these, um, reductions or cuts or restructures are all gonna be based off of policy and what the council at the end wants to do. So, um, I appreciate that. Um, those are all the questions that I have, um, for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Carbasi, you have the floor. Councilmember Carbasi?
I have no questions.
Okay, Councilmember Brederfield, you have the floor.
Yes, uh, Doug, uh, how many, uh, people have been fined now regarding these masks? How many businesses?
How many businesses have been fined for masks?
Yeah, you said you had fined some folks.
I don't know, but I can get that number for you.
Okay, uh, but you said.
Send out a, an update almost daily. I can find out.
What's, what's been the fines, uh, for the, uh, social, the, the combined fines for social distancing? The businesses that, uh, we tried to close and they weren't, uh, adhering to our mandates? What, what's the total fines thus far?
Councilmember, can you repeat your question? You cut off.
Okay, yeah, what was the total fines, Doug, from where we were trying to keep businesses closed? There were fines for social distancing. I mean, what was the total fines?
Uh, I'm getting your number right now. I don't have it handy.
I mean, do you have an estimate of what that is?
I would estimate forty, fifty thousand dollars total.
That's what, that's what I recall now. Um, how much of that was collected? Do you know?
Uh, none of it's been collected. The way it typically works is that somebody would have an opportunity for an administrative appeal. Uh, I don't know if any of those are even being, uh, done right now. That will take some time. Uh, and then, and then if they don't pay it, it would actually turn into a lien on their property. So it's probably a good six months to a year before we would actually see anything.
Okay, uh, so not, it probably nothing's been collected at this point. These are people who probably, is it fair to say not, nothing's been collected at this point that people are going to appeal it? Or hopefully, I think Councilman Carbasi or others are gonna bring it forward and see if we can eradicate the fines. Can't hear you, Doug. Can't hear you.
Saying, you can't hear you.
My best estimate is that we have not collected anything.
Okay, um, and I don't know, I, I, I don't know if Councilman Carbasi is gonna be bringing something forward before the council to see about eradicating the fines, uh, something I, I think he wants to do. I would certainly support. Uh, I, I again wanna, wanna caution the council. I mean, we're, we're looking at, uh, deficits of our budget, uh, from businesses that, as a result of businesses that have been shut down, not all from the city, clearly from the state. Uh, but we're looking at these shortfalls and, uh, you know, we debated the masks last week and now we're trying to find ways to punish people and their businesses if they're not forcing people to wear masks. Uh, again, I want to remind everybody, the health experts have been wrong from the outset. Um, we were told there were twenty-six million Californians were gonna get infected. That's not happening. The models have been wrong. Two point five, four million Americans were gonna die. That's wrong. Uh, wear masks, don't wear masks. We're gonna overwhelm the hospital system. That's not been true. Uh, the CDC has changed all over the place. The World Health Organization just said yesterday, uh, or the day before, that asymptomatic people very rarely, that's a quote, very rarely spread the disease. Yet we have people forcing them only in the city of Fresno to wear masks because we don't want asymptomatic people to spread the disease, even though the World Health Organization says they re- very rarely do. So, uh, we haven't learned anything if we're just continuing to pressure businesses, uh, to all these, uh, mandates that are unnecessary. People park in the parks. Uh, we haven't opened up nail salons and gyms and all these other things. Uh, we haven't opened up city hall, though all the other, um, government buildings are open. So we are operating in a, in another, um, a world other than what is happening elsewhere. So I caution, uh, City Attorney in terms of leaning on people, um, to do things that we really shouldn't be doing and will probably just get rid of those fines anyway because they're unfair, uh, and they're arbitrary. And only the city of Fresno, uh, in its infinite, uh, wisdom is doing it. Thank you.
Questions? Uh, we have not fined anybody solely for masks. We have collected two thousand dollars so far and we've issued about sixty thousand dollars in fines.
Great, total waste of time. Nothing but harassing businesses. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Brederfield. Your comments and questions. Councilmember Carbasi, you have the floor.
Thank you. Okay, so trying to find the middle ground, a lot of interesting things said. Um, I, I do, um, appreciate, um, genuinely, Councilmember Brederfield's concern for the impact businesses are having right now. It's a very tough time and to have to worry about everything about fines when you're not being a flagrant violator, uh, is a concern of mine. So I made it very clear how I feel about masks. The councilman and I disagree on this and that's fine. Um, we can still, we still work very well together. I, I don't think, I think in combination with other, uh, factors, masks can make a difference. I think they have made a difference in the city. And, um, my family's a business owner. We require masks. Even though it's required by the city, we still would require that because my father's at risk. Um, so when he comes back to work, we want to make sure we're safe. But, um, I don't actually think it's a great idea, especially when we're talking about the relationship between P D and the public, to use P D as an apparatus to enforce the public. We need people to cooperate. Now, I've had a lot of people call my office and say, I actually feel safer shopping in Fresno because people wore masks. So there's both sides of this issue. But I want to make it very clear to the City Attorney, I don't want code enforcement going out in my, in, in my district and going to the public and saying, you're not wearing a mask or we're gonna find you. And I respect if other want, people want that, that's okay. You have a right, you're elected, that's your priority. I don't want that in my district. I don't think that's gonna help get people on board with being in this together and fighting COVID. Um, now I think what might be better before I bring something forward to the council is if we give direction to the City Attorney to be compliant with the most recent order. There are people that receive fines. I'm, I'm not talking about price gougers. I'm not talking about people that violate a social distancing. Talking about the majority of people that got fined. And they weren't necessarily flagrant violators. Sometimes it was a miscommunication where they thought they were in compliance and they weren't. And I think that we should give the latitude to the City Attorney and his team, we've seen how great they are, to be able to, um, address those problems before I bring action forward for, um, any other, uh, forgiveness of fines. And I want to see how my colleagues feel about that for the non-flagrant violators.
Councilmember Carbasi, can you just clarify your direction so we can assess council's support for it?
Sure, to give the City Attorney latitude to evaluate the fines for, uh, the, the fines for, for those that were not, um, the open, I think it was the open business fines, not for those that committed social distancing violations or price gouging violations, but all the others. The discretion to be able to determine which were non-flagrant and to be able to assess whether they should, uh, remove those fines and give that peace of mind to those businesses.
I'm supportive of that direction. Any other council member wish to comment?
Counselor, real quick on that, the, the code already provides that we have discretion to enter into a compliance agreements in exchange for reducing fines. In other words, they, we would say we're reducing your fine from this to this if you sign this document saying you agree to comply for a certain period of time. If, if that's interesting, then we can pursue that.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think in some cases you can eliminate the fines though because they're really, it's now moot in some cases because now we have curbside pickup and things like that. Um, and if they haven't committed another fine, they're not flagrant. So I think that's part of it, absolutely.
Okay, uh, Council.
Councilmember Missoria has a comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Carbasi. Let me run this thing.
Thank you, Council President. Um, just wanted to ask, um, I thought code had like done education and note, like given people warnings. So if people violated it, violated our order was, they did it like willingly to, and knowing because our code enforcement officers actually went out. And I know some of the businesses went out and told them like, hey, this is our order. You gotta post this out. You gotta, you know? So I don't understand. I, I get, you know, um, the, the concern that you guys have. I'm just saying like, these are people that willingly violated our local law. And so, you know, beyond, and there isn't that many businesses, there isn't. But guess what? All the other businesses, um, bit the bullet and followed the law. So I'm just trying to figure out how we're gonna be fair to businesses because there was businesses that shut their doors from the time that we told they had to have their door shut without wasting code enforcement time. So that, that's the only thing I have. I, I, I get the, the concern about the small businesses, but I also, um, at what point, you know, do we start backtracking on the laws that we put? Because, you know, uh, I don't, I, I'm just, I'm a little concerned. I, I get that we want to help the small business community, but these folks were warned ahead of time. And maybe the flagrant are the five out of five, the, you know, I think there were some folks that had five violations or whatever, but. I, I, I wanna, I wanna, I want you guys to flush that out more for me. There's already some discretion, but I'm just, I'm concerned that we're not being consistent.
Uh, Councilmember Carbasi, uh, allow me to go to Council Vice President. He raised his hand. And you know, it's hard to raise your hand on the phone.
Before, before we get the wisdom of the Council Vice President, if I can comment, that way he can give, close this thing and give us a really good, he's always great at giving his feedback if that's okay, just real quick, because Councilmember Missoria made very good points.
Go ahead.
Okay, and you're actually right, Councilmember. Um, so what I'm talking about are the non-flagrant violators and let me give you an example. I'm not gonna say who. Um, one of the businesses that was fined received bad advice from one of my colleagues. It was unintentional. We misinterpreted the rule and they were told to do something and turns out they got fined when they didn't intend to. And they were compliant once that happened. That's the kind of stuff I'm talking about giving the City Attorney latitude to be able to, um, in a case-by-case basis, make that determination. Uh, and, and, no, you're right, we do have rules and we have to follow them. A lot of businesses were shut down. They were impacted and that's a very good point. Um, there were some rules where, um, the next day it was deemed, uh, uh, legal and that person was still deemed, I'm talking about just giving them the discretion and putting that trust in them for those kind of things. But you make a very good point.
Thank you, Councilmember Carbasi. Now.
Maybe that colleague should pay for their fine, whoever gave them the bad advice.
Okay, okay, so, um, before we get to the wisdom of, um, the outer statesmen of Councilmember Vice President Caprileo, Council Vice President Caprileo, um, there is no pressure, but you're supposed to bring this to a close for us.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, I accept pressure willingly, uh, from all sources, especially if there's a retainer involved as my lawyer skills come into play. Uh, I, I, I just wanted to add, confirm the analysis, uh, by my colleague, uh, Carbasi, uh, that what we want to do is make sure that the latitude that's given to the City Attorney be utilized by the City Attorney in a fashion that's. be utilized by the city attorney in a fashion that's reasonable, reasonable to all businesses and all, all of Fresno. So use your ability to be flexible. We understand the rules. If they understand the rules and then they're flagrant violations, uh, then of course, that's where we come into play with uh enforcement. But on the other hand, I, I totally agree that most people are trying to comply. Most people, at least in my district uh, are doing their very best. I'm very proud of them because they've done a great job. And I would uh join in Member Carvazi's request that we can, we can skip District Four. We're pretty uh, pretty quiet, pretty effective. Uh, and we follow rules. So with that in mind, uh, I support Member Carvazi's uh analysis and conclusion and uh, join in authorizing Doug to utilize the uh flexibility he already has. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President, and um, our counts, legal counsel has just warned us that we need to make sure we, we keep our comments focused on the budget and not other items. So it looks like we have some direction related to the budget for council on this. Um, Doug, you know, continue to use your discretion as authorized under the ordinance. Um, any other budget related questions for our city attorney? All right, seeing none, I would have, I do have a couple of questions, Doug. Um, have we accounted for all the COVID-related work that our uh city attorneys have been doing these past few months?
Uh, under the, the, the CARES regulations, yes, we're doing our best to capture all of the time within our office that can be reimbursed. It's largely the inspectors. Uh, for example, with lawyers, we can't necessarily do that. Uh, but with the inspectors, certainly that have been reassigned to do things purely for COVID. Uh, we are attempting to capture that. Uh, it's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars so far that would be recaptured. That would actually create an additional surplus in our budget and another six hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year.
Okay. Um, Councilman Missoria, you have a question?
Just on that same line, have you guys anticipated about how much more? Because, you know, we have the federal CARE Act dollar through the end of the year. How much more um, we expect COVID-related work coming out of not only the city attorney's office? Because I know many of you guys are working on giving us guidance and so forth, which I'm assuming can be used since it was unexpected work. Um, but also part of the code um, for this next um budget as we look forward to.
Counsel, I think it really depends on our direction. Uh, for example, if you wanted us to return to residential inspections, then those people would be reassigned to do that versus remaining on COVID-related things. I see, I think it depends solely upon what you direct us to do.
Okay.
How many re, how much resources you would ask that we devote to COVID?
Okay, so that's up to us, council. You guys.
And, and Doug, um, I would ask that you prepare a recommendation for the council on how much additional COVID work should be done by your respective staff, including code. Um, and at what point do you think that we can, you know, refocus on the normal code work and city attorney work?
With, with it.
Mike, do you have your hand up?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I received a text from a colleague. I just want to clarify. I'm sorry, it's not who you may think it is. I shouldn't have said that. I just wanted to provide context. Um, so I'm not going to say who, who it was. It was unintentional. It, it was an easy mistake to make regarding.
We all have your apology, Councilmember Carvazi, including the, the, you know, imaginary person that you were mentioning.
Not an imaginary person, but I didn't want to throw one of my claws under the bus. It was unintentional and you can ask the, the city attorney for, for confirmation that that actually happened.
It's okay. Thank you for your um, your courtesy and um, always your humility on the subject. Um, I do have one motion, um, city attorney for your budget. I'd like to make a motion to set aside a hundred thousand dollars in your budget towards um, community policing, research and support work. Um, we know that we've been hearing a lot of um requests from the public on pursuing community policing. It's going to be something that's going to require our city attorney's time and support were to go down that path. So I'd like to make a motion to just set aside the money for now. Um, the motion's been made, it's been seconded by Councilwoman Soria. Um, Councilmember Sparza, you have the floor.
Uh, no, I'll, I'll, I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. All right, is there, uh, we're going to go to public comment on this. If I don't see any more um, comments or direction for our city attorney on his budget. Um, is there anybody from the public that wishes to address the council on the city attorney's budget? If so, raise your hand on the software and we'll identify you for three minutes. If not, we will move on to the next budget presentation. Seeing none, um, we're moving on to the next budget presentation. It is our city clerk's budget. Um, and after we put up the presentation, our city clerk would have the floor. And in the meantime, city attorney, we will knock off the video because we started the presentation already. Okay. All right, city clerk, Yvonne, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. I'd like to use this opportunity to provide information to the public and our new council members about what the city clerk does. We have a mission statement that says that we provide quality public service and connect the public with legislative process, and we strive to ensure the city's legislative processes are transparent by providing easy access to information. The clerk is often the first um department that members of the public contact when they want information about the city. And through our efficient resources, we are able to ensure the preservation of the city of Fresno's legislative history. Our roles include many functions. We're a very small department, but we do lots of little important things. We're the election official, the local legislation auditor for ordinances and municipal code. Political reform filing officer for finance, uh, campaign finance and statements of economic, economic interest, seven hundred forms. We also um, provide records management and archives. We research and preserve the city documents. We handle public uh inquiries, PRAs. And we also support the city council with agendas, minutes and attending the meetings and any other way that we can support them. Our responsibilities include thousands of statutes and regulations exist to protect the democracy and provide a system of checks and balances. It's the clerk's responsibility to ensure compliance with these laws, which are complex and constantly changing. City clerk as a local official must have the professional education, training and knowledge to understand and administer these laws. Next, we'll have a um picture of our department. We, we have sick staff when we're fully staffed. And we do many, many things, as you can see from the flow chart. Our main divisions are administration and records management. And then we want to talk about some of the highlights from the nineteen twenty uh fiscal year. We've developed policies and procedures for records management, electronic signatures, and we rewrote administrative order for the city council agenda process to reflect the current process, which is an automated process. We work with the county clerk on the new election process, which is the California Voters Act Choice, Choice Act. It uh entail voting centers and mail ballots. The primary election for districts two, four, six, and the mayor were held in March twenty twenty instead of June twenty twenty. There was no runoff during this election because everyone won their seats outright, saving the city about twenty thousand five hundred dollars. And we successfully implemented and managed the Zoom meeting for regular special emergencies meeting with breakout rooms for closed session items in lieu of the COVID atmosphere. Future projects include updating our agenda management software. There's things out there now that are, can be more efficient and we're always looking for ways to improve our efficiency. We'd like to update the records retention schedule. There's a few things on there that we need to update. We also um, try to stay abreast of digitizing our historic records. And um, of course, that takes funding as well. We'll be working with ISD and ECS, which is the consultant, to improve how our laser, laser fish document management system is working. We'll also be working with the county to train on new roles for the election in twenty twenty two because some things will be changed. Um, we also plan on providing uh Zoom training to departments to meet the debt, filing deadlines for our seven hundred forms. And then some of the notable items from twenty nineteen twenty is ninety seven percent of our Form seven hundred filers, SEI, were submitted nineties um, on time and electronically compared to ninety one percent in the last year. We processed four hundred and forty five notices and publications that were posted to the city clerk's office this year versus three hundred and forty seven posted last year. We processed five hundred and seventy three PRAs this year versus four hundred and ten the last year. And we conformed uh, two hundred and forty six resolutions and eighty three ordinances this year. Um, attached this, keep in mind, this was prepared before the COVID environment. And so these were some of the requests that I was going to be making to council, but uh, given the environment we're in, we, we don't have to even go into that. And I think that's the end and open for questions.
Thank you, city clerk. Is there any council members that wish to ask questions to the city clerk? Councilwoman Soria, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, um, city clerk for that presentation. Um, so similar to, I guess, the city attorney, did you guys have, I know that you guys are very small department and don't have as much staff as the city attorney does where there's potential um savings due to vacancies, but were there any um monies that were allocated in your department that were, that went unspent or that are potentially going to go unspent um during this fiscal year?
Um, the only thing that we have is um salary savings from a position that was empty for periods of time during uh twenty twenty. And uh, other things uh that we have funded is things like our municipal code. So the more ordinances that are passed that um impacts the municipal code, the more money we have to spend in that area. So that, that's a, a big deal and I wouldn't want to touch that. Um, the other um, funding that we have, I believe ISD is now carrying for us in twenty twenty one for our agenda management system. And we do look to see some cost savings there.
Okay. Um, okay. And, you know, I think obviously we're not in a position to write, write at them and just until I think we go through the entire budget and see where there's um resources. Um, one of the things that I want to highlight about the, in terms of the importance of the clerk's office is that um, it is that hub that allows us to increase transparency with our community um, with the information that it, that is put out, um, you know, before a meeting, after a meeting, and also for um, like you said, a lot of our older records. Um, so kind of to, to make sure that they are easily accessible, digitized. I know that that's a project that you've been working on um for some time. So I do appreciate that if there's at all anywhere an opportunity, um, I would like the council to um consider you know, allocating some resources or figuring out how we can continue to digitize just because one, it adds transparency, gives historical context, and it allows um folks to really um access records that may be important to, to our community. So um, so yeah, those are just my comments. Thank you.
Any other uh questions from the council on the city clerk's budget? All right, seeing none. Um, I will, city clerk, how many positions do you have in your department?
Six full-time positions.
And are, is there any vacancies in your department currently?
We've got an offer from someone that's supposed to start June twenty second.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Um, and are we up to speed with um, all the improvements that have to happen in the chambers and in your office to be able to manage these virtual meetings?
The chambers should have the lighting worked on uh July, June, this week, I'm sorry, this week. And the sound has already been corrected and um, I think we're ready to go once that lighting is fixed.
Okay. So council, just for your context, um, I gave the city clerk direction a few weeks ago to make sure that the chambers has all the necessary equipment um, in order for us to, to, and when we commend the council to use usage, that it also, it also allows us for us to um, at the same time provide for Zoom patients. And Jim and, Jim and his staff is supportive and makes sure, to make sure that chambers for the next two weeks will be closed for use as the, the lighting, um, the light, lights get in place. Light um, been out for a couple of years, if not, if not, is there any, if not, you, you want to get him on the members?
Um, so one of the things, uh, in, in, in a, at the same time that we're, we're having the, having the lighting, having the contractor come in and ABS come in and do, do private project. Working on the social, social distancing protocols, finishing those up, trying to maximize the number of people that can be in that chamber uh while remaining uh compliant with social distancing practices. So I, I think in the roughly two weeks, we'll be ready to go on both fronts.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and city clerk, have we, have we been submitting all the COVID nineteen reimbursable costs that your office has been encountering?
We've, we've taken up with that.
Okay, um, good. With that, council, I would like to make a motion to um fund the following items in a city clerk's request, um, given that we're going to have some savings in the budget with all the COVID nineteen um expenditures that we're going to get reimbursed. Uh, the motion would be to fund the microfilm filming funding at forty five thousand, it's one time. And the ADA accessibility to the city clerk's office, seven thousand dollars one time. Um, and that we've at least do those two things um that are one-time cost um for the city clerk to continue to operate in the way that she has been. Is there a second to that motion, second by Member Carvazi? Okay, is there any other motions that the council would like to consider related to the city clerk's budget? Uh, Councilman Soria, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, sorry, on um COVID nineteen related expenses, like all this other work that you guys have been doing with Zoom and even, I'm, I'm assuming even part of your guys' salary. Um have you guys accounted for how much of it um will be COVID nineteen? Could we get that information, Yvonne?
Well, we, we have submitted some things that included salaries and we were told that those salaries, like the time we spend in these meetings and and working on Zoom does not count toward the COVID. So, but the other, anything that wasn't salaries went through.
So let's make sure we follow.
Translation, translating.
Yeah, we, we had a lot of, if council, if you recall, we had a lot of special meetings just specifically ready to COVID. They had to be announced and people had to come in and do overtime work. So let's make sure that we double check with Mike Lima and see whether we can recapture.
And our city attorney, I think that we need to put our heads together because I do believe that even though the city clerk, that that's their role that like you mentioned, council president, there were a lot more meetings happening, a lot more um part of their time was spent trying to figure out all this online stuff that they would have not had to have figured out if um we wouldn't have been in this situation. So in my perspective and how I interpret, I think that there is some, there should, their, part of their salary should be allowed for reimbursement. So if we can, city attorney, if we can work on, on that, that would be great.
We'll, we'll do what we can.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the council on this budget? If not, I'll go to the public for comment. Okay, is there any member of the public wishing to address accounts on this item? Seeing none, we will move on. Oh, we have two individuals. Thank you for reminding me, city clerk. Uh, Lisa Flores, um, you are being unmuted, so please address the council for three minutes on the city clerk's budget.
Um, just real quick, um, I support all the funding for Yvonne and more because this is the one department I really like in the city. They have been so gracious and helpful for every single request I've ever made and have gone way above and beyond. And I thank you, Yvonne.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next person is uh Mr. Casa Mayor, you are being unmuted and you'll have three minutes to address the council. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you for the time. I also agree with Ms. Flores. Every time I go to the city clerk's office, they're very uh friendly and very courteous and, and, and give us the right information of where we have to go to get what we need. It's sometimes the other departments after we leave the city clerk where we have a hard time getting those documents. So in regards of, of community um, access to information, I want to know is are there particular funding for more community liaisons? Like I know that the city council has um, some community folks that, that are representing the, our messengers to the community. Um, is there ways that we can have a better understanding of how that works, how that's funded in, in the communities? I do, I feel a little bit lost in understanding what are the measures and responsibilities of the messengers or liaisons um to the community? Because a lot of times it goes only to a few number of community folks knowing what's going on at City Hall. And a lot of times us were trying to find out independently, have a lot of loopholes that we have to go through. And a lot of times us were trying to find out independently, have a lot of loopholes that we have to go through. So I just want to know what is that relationship in regards of getting information from this, from, from the city council, what's the relationship to the city clerk when you have to go get information? Because I'm getting lost a lot of times when I go to the city clerk's office and then I go to another department that has that information that's supposed to be given. The information is lost and then sometimes I go and talk to some community leaders in the community and they have answers. So I'm wondering what is the, what is the relationship in regards of being transparent with accessing information from the city council to community? And also on the role that the, the city clerk plays in regards of, of being more knowledgeable on, on who should we get that information from? Because a lot of times we get the right information from the city clerks, but we just don't get those those answers from when we go to, to the different offices in, in the building and city hall.
Thank you, Mr. Casa Mayor. And we can have the city clerk follow up with you. I think what you're referencing is the records management system that we've been working on for a couple of years now. Making sure that our city clerk, who is the official record management person for the city. And everybody understands the training and the access that they have to provide for public records. With that, the next speaker is David Tao. You now have the floor of three minutes.
Uh, thank you, council president, David Tao, the GCUire. Just want to say, as a reporter covering city hall, I do find the city clerk's office is very helpful. They do respond to my many requests in a very timely and courteous manner. So I just wanted to get that out on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tao. We'll make sure we send you a bill for the multiple requests. Thank you again, council for this. That concludes the public record, the public comment I made for the city clerk's budget. Is there any other council member motions related to the city clerk's budget that you'd like to consider before we move on to the next item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Thank you, city attorney and city clerk for giving us a great example on what a budget presentation looks like. Councilwoman Soria, we'll go to you before we move on to the next item.
Are you breaking for lunch? So staff can.
Oh, we forgot.
Yeah, remember lunch?
I guess we, I guess you guys want to eat. All right.
I'm hungry.
Right. Okay. So we will break for lunch and we'll be back at 1:30. Does that work for folks? All right. See you back at 1:30. Thank you all. Thank you, councilwoman, for the reminder that people got to eat.
Thanks.
We'll be back.
Thank you. All right, city council, can we confirm that our members are back online? We'll start with council vice president Capriolio. We are, I'm meeting you.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember Soria?
Here.
Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Present.
Councilmember Betterfield, I thought I saw you. Councilmember Sparza?
Present.
Present. All right, councilmember Betterfield, are you online? Well, I'll counter better field a couple of minutes to get online so we can begin. City staff, are you prepared?
We might have to unmute them as well.
There you are. Jane, you should be unmuted.
Yes.
Okay.
Lima's here and, and he's ready to start finance whenever.
Okay. All right, perfect. Let's begin. We are back in session at 1:36. City staff, do you have a presentation for the finance department?
I'm, I'm sorry, the budget manager will be giving you some pertinent information. There is no presentation as far as PowerPoint. But he will be giving you some background information and in fact, we're trying to.
Can you please start the video for Henry?
Trying to start something.
So city staff, do you not have any formal presentations like we heard from the city attorney and city clerk?
No.
What kind of pertinent information will you be sharing with the rest of the department, relate to the rest of the department?
We will be sharing the basics of their budget, the basics of how many positions they have vacant. The basics of their operational budget and what it covers.
You know, city staff, the first morning, the morning session was very helpful since we have formal presentations. And I know it's already difficult enough for most of us to participate via Zoom. So I would like to make a motion to continue the rest of the departments for Thursday and give direction to staff to prepare formal presentations for each department. That way we can take one by one like we did this morning. And you can focus those presentations on whatever information you feel is pertinent, but we'd like a formal presentation for the benefit of the council and the public. Is there a second to the motion? Counsel?
A second.
Okay, councilor Betterfield, second. Let me go to the public. Is there anybody from the public wishing to, wishing to speak to the council on the item? We're essentially making a motion to continue the remainder of the departments till Thursday afternoon so that staff can prepare formal presentations on each department and provide us and the public the pertinent information in advance. Councilwoman Soria, you have a comment? Your hands raised?
Yes, thank you, council president. I think that that's a great idea. The other thing, as I mentioned earlier on, after Jane had made her presentation, I think very similar to what, mostly what the city attorney did, because the city clerk's office is so small that there really isn't much cost savings aside from whatever COVID-19 related work that they've done that will get reimbursed. But I think it's important for us to understand how much has been spent, what positions are vacant, any cost savings up to this point so that we understand where there will be the opportunities if, if we have to go that route, where we will have to make some adjustments. And so I think that that's what at least I would like to see also as part of the presentations.
You know, and I want to, I'd like to remind councilman, I know we've talked about this last week, but this was part of the whole continuing resolution where we would actually come back with actual budget hearings in the fall. And I, I came in a few minutes late and if Jane and Mike already said that, I apologize for being redundant, but we had not even wanted to, to roll out every department because again, we were just simple, simply attempting to roll over the budget until August, September.
Yeah. Thank you, city manager. We, we understand that that's the, the preference of the, of the city manager and the mayor. But I, I, I think based on the magnitude of the challenge that we have ahead of us and the fact that we're doing this virtually versus in person, the public really and the council needs to understand what the context of the budgets are prior to us giving you direction or giving you some advice on, on how to handle and prepare for option one or two given the, the challenges that we have. So we, we hope that the administration will pretty easily put together a formal presentation on each department with the basic information so that the public understands vacancies, you know, budgets, expenditures. And we can have a fruitful conversation resolution. So with that, there's a motion. There's a second. City clerk, we do roll call.
Councilmember Betterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Hi.
Councilmember Karbasi? Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council vice president Capriolio?
Yes.
And president Arias?
Yes. All right, council, that concludes our budget hearings for the day. We will continue budget hearings on Thursday afternoon.
One, one, one question, then, then we will move, I'm sorry, council president. So we'll move finance, information services and fire to Thursday, the 11th?
Yes. Okay. And just for the general public's understanding, these hearings for each departments are listed, but they are always subject to being moved and being heard at a later time, not at an earlier time based on the calendar and agenda items that we have before us. So.
Council president?
Yes.
I just wanted to add so that we're all cognizant, just because I know that I'm assuming, given kind of the, even just the amount of comments that we got today, and today was in a police department discussion, that on Thursday, we do have the police department scheduled and then the fire department is another big department. Just want to make sure that people understand that we're going to probably work some long.
Councilwoman Soria, we, we, we do have the police department scheduled for Monday, the 15th.
Oh, I thought it was Thursday. Sorry.
And just as a heads up to the council and to the public, we are evaluating the potential of, of having a council meeting and budget hearing for June 15th at the Sorion Theater to try and accommodate an in-person meeting. The staff.
And council president, we need to talk about that before you make any.
I was just about to say that. The staff and, and, and our office will evaluate the options and see if that's a viable option for us to hold an in-person budget hearing in a room that fits, you know, a couple of thousand people. But we'll get back to you as we evaluate all the options and considerations that we have to take into account. Councilmember Karbasi?
He's muted.
Muted.
Thanks.
There you go.
No, I just want to clarify, when is the council that we discussed doing that? I mean, I wish, you know, the chambers were open. I understand we're doing the lighting upgrades and we've had issues with sanitation, but we're, we're talking about not wanting to, you know, people are saying they don't want more overtime for PD. This is going to be another overtime item.
Well, I don't want to have a full discussion because it's not on the agenda, councilmember Karbasi, but I will offline with you and the rest of the council once we meet with staff to see.